Okay, the May twenty first regular meeting for the Board of Trustees is now called to order. Secretary Burford, please proceed with the roll call.
Trustees, please respond when I call your name. Christine Cronin.
Here.
Margot Gigan.
Here.
Gary George.
Here.
Chuck Hoffman.
Yes.
Oring Kikul. Erin Lair.
Here.
Tamara Mabbett. George Mendoza.
Here.
Cedric Reel.
Present.
Kelly Ryan.
Here.
Brenda Smith.
Here.
Anna Stanley.
Present.
Brad Stevens.
Here.
Here.
Kerry Thompson. Mauricio Valeri.
Ready.
Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Secretary Burford, please proceed with your opening announcements.
Thank you. Uh, everyone, please put your cell phones on do not disturb. If you brought a laptop or device, please be sure the speakers and microphone are turned off. Members of the media, if you haven't already done so, please sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. Likewise, anyone present in person who wishes to give public comment, please be sure to sign the sign in sheet at the recorder's desk to my left. Uh, to provide access to the public, the public have been invited to attend in person and this meeting is being livestreamed over the internet. Uh, to operate the boardroom microphones, you'll need to press the right button for the mic to turn on. It will stay on until you press the button again. Uh, the mics are also directional and need to point at your face to pick up your speech properly. Please make sure to speak directly into the mics. If you're joining us remotely, please keep yourself muted unless speaking. And trustees, uh, in front of you, you'll you find travel reimbursement forms. Please sign the travel form and return it to Susanna Moore by the end of the meeting. Uh, and, uh, the board received no written public comments for this meeting. We also did not receive requests to give oral public comment by remote means. No one signed up in advance to give public oral comment in person. Uh, in a few minutes, we'll see if anyone signs up to provide comment during the public comment period portion of our agenda. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you, Chris. Well, I hope we have a wonderful meeting. I'm sure it's going to be lovely. Does anyone have any other announcements? Having heard, uh, note of other announcements, let's begin with remarks from President Kelly Ryan.
Thank you, Chair Mendoza, and thank you, everyone, for being here today. It's been a just kind of tremendously busy time at the university. We had so many events last week and in weekend that, you know, just honestly, we couldn't count or think, just celebrate all the time. Uh, some highlights included our celebration of scholarships, where donors and the students who received their donation had time to to interact and and it was quite beautiful. We had a positively wonderful production of Fiddler on the Roof and it was so nice, you know. Now that I've been here a couple of years, I get to see our students progress in their learning and performance. And so it's just sort of a special treat. Uh, we had the ribbon cutting of the grand staircase, Blue and Gold Weekend, the fiftieth Annual Powwow and our alumni and foundation board meetings right in this room on Saturday. Uh, thank you to Chuck Hoffman, who actually represented the Board of Trustees at several events and even shared words. So, so thank you for that. Kimberly, Kimberly Newman sent out our May update and, um, it would be hard to be nothing but impressed with the amazing efforts of the faculty and staff as well as the administration. Everyone's really working hard to advance research, student experiences, and of course, services. We have had some challenges as well as opportunities as the spring term began. Um, enrollment, uh, we found a bit of a challenge this term. Compared to spring twenty twenty four, we had a three point five decrease in headcount. Uh, but it's only a one point three percent decrease in credit hours, which as many of you now understand and know is is our our budget driver. And I know those those numbers probably feel disjointed to you. Um, but having had time to dig into these numbers, uh, the reason why they're strange is because the headcount number loss represents high school dual credit students and part time online students. So these just quite simply aren't students who take a lot of credit hours. In terms of dual credit offerings, we actually have had a seven point five percent increase in dual credit offerings uh, since we started the program two years ago, but, um, it it is a decline this year. Part of understanding, I think, that puzzle of not having a steep, uh, enrollment or I'm sorry, credit hour decline is also understanding that we had an eighty five student increase on campus population. And our on campus population tends to take more credit hours, and this is of course related to age. Um, they are generally younger and and they're spending, they're devoting all of their time rather than many of our online students who are really upskilling. And overall, we only had a point one decrease in our FTE. Um, so we continue to see growth in our online graduate programming as well. We're continuing to focus on retention with new programming writ large and a critical mind towards solving the issues as we see them. Uh, we did have a point nine percent drop in retention this spring, and I'm finding it, um, particularly discouraging because we've been on a positive trend for the last six terms. And it is a murky picture when you really dig into the numbers. Among first year students, it's a point eight percent. I know these aren't big numbers, but this is what presidents do. Um, so it's a point eight percent drop, um, in in first year students, but our on campus retention rose by one point one percent. So an interesting disjunction there between again, online students and on campus students. Uh, and our new transfer retention rate was down one point six with decreases in both on campus and online. So a lot of work to be done. Um, I, we do believe some of the uncertainty in the world right now i- is part of this. Um, e- especially when we, when we think about financial aid issues. So we're digging into all of this and much of the work that we're doing is connected to the strategies that we adopted last year, right? This is, this is the work we do and many of you who are on the Academic and Student Affairs Committee have, um, seen, um, we have someone now working on the stopouts and reaching out to those students, the 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 point eight who are who are no longer with us. Uh, Peter, Molly, Deanie and I are also really focusing on fall right now. Uh, we're meeting weekly to try and improve fun fall numbers. And and these again are the strategies that we adopted a year ago. I mean, I think we're on the right path. It's just again, it's this very uncertain time. And I know we're discussing the budget, you know, today and tomorrow and and behind everything we talk about, the truth is, the budget dominates. Uh, and we fortunately have good work in progress to register, register students earlier than normal. This was one of our strategies you may recall us talking about. There was a huge list for Peter to work with all of the deans to create schedules earlier and also working with advising to have them get students registered and ultimately matriculate it so that we can reduce some of the summer melt. Uh, we've also increased our directed missions pilots, including two more regions. Um, and we're working on a better communication plan this year to hopefully reap even more rewards from these pilot programs and working through the benefits of it with our school districts. In really, really good news, we're anticipating a larger than usual graduation class this year. Walking in commencement, twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four had three hundred and ninety graduates walk. And Emily Sherret, our registrar, is anticipating about four hundred and fifty walking across the stage, which tends to be about sixty more than the past two years. So I'm excited about what this means. We've talked about some of the growth that we've had in retention over the past two years. This is the persistence to graduation piece, so we're pretty excited about that. Other really good news coming from athletics. Our softball team is probably in Georgia right now, uh, preparing for the NAIA World Series. Uh, they're playing tomorrow and hopefully through the weekend and maybe even until next week. Cross fingers, support them, watch online. Our men's track and field team is competing in the NEIA National Outdoor Championships as well. And more good news for track and field, Coach Ben Welch has been named Men's Track and Field Coach for the CCC yet again. I happened to be with the President's Council for CCC on Monday and 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 kind of brought it to the table. And Rob Cashel, who some of you who have been longer term EOU folk, shared that it's been thirty times that he's been named Coach of the Year and he's had thirty conference championships. You know, he is just the kind of person that inspires you. I'm just really proud of him and everything he's done. And, um, for those of you who maybe got to see the the opening talk by by DJ, one of our students about track and field, you can see that he's he's cultivating athletes and scholars and it's exciting. Uh, lobbying efforts are kind of more active than usual. You know, that's probably a theme that you'll hear, uh, in the in the two days. We've had a lot of ongoing efforts to build funding for the PUSF. Uh, as some of you know, the last time we had committee meetings, I was actually zooming from Salem for this reason. Tim's gonna discuss more about that later and I'll be sharing information on the federal side, uh, in a few moments on the agenda. But suffice it to say, we have a lot of challenges. Uh, and then you've also heard a lot about the Great Colleges to Workforce Survey, both this year and last. And I just wanted to let you know that, uh, last week, we spent, the administration and I spent the entire time going over the Great Colleges to Workforce Survey, actions we've taken to try and improve the climate and morale. Uh, you know, no, we haven't had a huge flush of money to change everything here, but there are things we can do to to better the, uh, morale of our employees, delivering on professional development and delivering on, you know, an appreciative culture and things like that. So, um, we didn't have a ton of attendees, but I'm hopeful that people will take the time to watch it and give us some time and space in their hearts. We're gonna continue to focus on the great colleges to work for for the for the next two years. A lot, a lot of work to be done. And then just wanted to say thank you for spending time with our students and and seeing their academic projects this morning. Uh, after our meeting today, we are honoring our faculty at a faculty appreciation event. I hope you'll be able to to pop over for that. And then we also have Island Magic this weekend, which is a really huge celebration. Definitely fills up the room, lots of good vibes. So I hope you're able to take advantage of everything we have to offer. Those are my comments.
Thank you, President Ryan. Um, I'm gonna hit just one or two topics, very little that she already covered. I didn't have her notes or anything like that, but, uh, President Ryan does a great job of explaining the things that are going on. Um, my comments from the board chair, it's been a great few weeks at EOU. Lots of energy. Lots of community, people coming together and celebrating. Um, President Ryan just shared some recent highlights, but I also want to take to a moment to reflect what makes this place so special. From the Powwows to the grand opening of the grand staircase, thanks for for being there and supporting. From the Fiddler on the Roof to the spring scrimmages, to the senior recognitions across campus, these moments remind us why we all care so deeply about Eastern. They reflect the pride, the passion and the purpose of our students, faculty and staff and what they bring every day. Celebrating our athletics, so I won't say as much because, uh, Dr. Ryan said some things. I love that the men's track and field team, um, is ninth in the country and it's their fourth, uh, conference championship in a row. I didn't know all those things about Ben, but I definitely have gotten to know, uh, Ben over time. And he is a wonderful coach, a wonderful human, a wonderful educator. Yeah, a great person. Um, women's track is in twenty second place internationally, so that's not too bad. That's nothing. Softball, competing in Columbia, uh, Columbus, Georgia for the NEIA, NEIA World Series. Um, when I wrote about that, to me, that's a huge milestone. It highlights the incredible commitment of our student athletes and our coaching staff. I'm a big person of like the memories that athletes experience or that sports or competition does for humans. Um, I I know I wouldn't be here if I didn't have coaches or people that loved me, but I know those memories, those experiences, those travel things, those things that you do to grow as a human. Uh, a lot of that came from being involved in sports. I know there's other ways that we get that. But for me in particular, um, that relationship that you have with your coaches or that relationship that you build with the other players or athletes, and then that spirit of competition, I think, brings out the best of people. But these moments, I think, represent school pride, getting to be in that national New World Series, great coaching, determined and talented athletes, lifelong memories that they get to share with one another, especially wonderful mem- memories of their accomplishments while at EOU. I love that people have great experiences here at EOU. Board appreciation, um, as we open up today's trustees meeting, I want to thank each of you. I know how much time and commitment you bring to this work. Reviewing materials, joining committees, making trips to campus. My sense is that you do it and we do it because we care deeply about EOU. In particular, our students and our staff. Um, our lunch today with students from the Oregon Teacher Pathway Program was a reminder of why this work matters. Every time we engage directly with students, faculty or staff, we get closer to the heart of EOU's mission, which is to provide access to higher education, workforce and career pipelines to living wage jobs. And most importantly, we get to see how EOU works to transform the lives of those that we serve and how we can make that impact to our society. Over the next two days, we're, we will be making, uh, several important decisions. Finalizing our accreditation report, setting tuition and room and board rates, approving a recommended preliminary operating budget. These are com- complex and sometimes difficult topics, but they are essential to our roles as trustees. I'm grateful for your thoughtful engagement, for your transparency and your commitment to approaching these conversations with a shared sense of responsibility and purpose. I'd also like to take a moment to recognize the start, the strong partnership that I have with President Ryan. We stay in close contact and work hard to stay aligned in our support of this university. That level of communication doesn't happen everywhere and I don't take it for granted. Kelly, thank you for your leadership, your consistency, your focus on students first, while looking to collaborate with staff and with regional stakeholders to make our lives better. I do get to hear often of the meetings that that Dr. Ryan has and I'm always, uh, inspired or thoughtful or thankful for the the work that you do to get along with everybody and to make their lives better or to make our region better. Um, I love that you do that. Looking ahead, um, we'll be back here, uh, on one of the best days of the year, commencement or graduation on June fourteenth at nine thirty. Hopefully, most of us or remote, many of us will be here. Standing in Community Stadium as students walk across the stage, that is powerful. I've been to several, um, I do love EOU's graduation commencement ceremonies. It's a, it's a reminder that everything we do here has meaning. These graduates will carry EOU with them into the world and we get to be a part of that journey. Later this summer, we're gonna gather again for our board retreat. It'll be a great chance for us to go deeper into our shared goals and strengthen the work that we do together. Also to support the strategic direct direction that will help EOU to move forward. In closing, our work matters. Uh, we do as trustees, trustees, impact the lives of many. And when we are connected with each other in support of students and the leadership team, we make real progress in support of those who care about EOU. Thank you for believing in Eastern. Thank you for supporting our faculty, our staff, our administration, and most importantly, our students as well as our president. We all love EOU and we are better when we work as a team. And that ends my, my remarks. Okay. We are now gonna hear updates from our board committees. First up, we'll be Committee Chair Erin Lair, who will discuss work taking place from Academic and Student Affairs Committee. Chair Lair, please proceed.
Yeah, and thank you to Dr. Ryan and Chair Mendoza, uh, for your remarks this morning. I think that that's a really great way to kick off this spring meeting. So thank you. And I had a chance to watch Fiddler on the Roof as well. And I, I mean, I have quite the musical theater little one in my world, so we will not miss one ever. But what struck me more than just how phenomenal the EOU students were in that is how much the programs and, um, activities that happen at EOU are community experience. You show up, but then you go see all these community members on the stage alongside EOU. Um, it was the same in the choir concert earlier this year. And, um, I just think that's a really great strategy and it's really important and it maintains that vibrancy. I just read an article about the impact on local, um, economic development functionally with some of the trends we're seeing in higher education and, um, who's gaining and losing students and what that's looking like in those communities. And I think it just underscores what we're doing here at EOU and how important that is actually to the whole of La Grande and our surrounding area. So thank you for those statements. Um, in the Academic and Student Affairs, we had a very full April thirtieth, um, committee meeting and it was super productive. Um, we have it in our consent agenda, but we, um, listened to presentations on three new, um, program proposals that I think really speak to the directionality of trying to, um, be really intentional in what we're adding and that like small ads in really targeted areas can have really big impacts for us potentially, um, and meeting the needs of our region. So, um, I just real appreciation to the leaders in those spaces and, um, seeing those needs, addressing the needs and building something that could be meaningful, that can be impactful for EOU without, um, a lot of like pull on our resources to do it. We can expand consciously. So, um, the other, um, presentation, um, was around our retention efforts and benefits navigator. And it was, it's always nice to see faculty up and presenting that the work they do. Um, it was loaded, so we did not leave a ton of room for our strategic updates, but, um, we'll get to hear some of those today. So I think it was a really productive meeting. I appreciate everyone again, like as Chair Mendoza mentioned, taking the time. Committee meetings are certainly a lot of time and effort to do that, but, um, I appreciate the attendance, um, on April thirtieth and our ability to, um, honor the work of those who did those presentations that day.
Thank you, Erin. Next, we have, uh, Chair Tamara Mabbett on the Governance Committee. So Tamara, please proceed.
Uh, thank you, George Mendoza, and my apologies for being late, but, um, full time working professionals try to squeeze this in and, um, and I won't be here tomorrow, I apologize, but it's pretty important to get my department budget approved by the, uh, governing board tomorrow. So, um, I'll be really brief. There's several items. We've met twice, um, as a governance committee and, um, we continue the work of, um, updating as, um, we see, uh, necessary with a lot of tutelage and guidance from Secretary Buford, and we appreciate that very much. Um, spoke briefly about the spring retreat and, um, we have a couple of items on the consent agenda and I know they've been asked to be moved to discussion, which is just fine. That's the, uh, the, the way the process works.
Thank you, Chair Mabbett. Uh, our final committee report this afternoon is from Chair Chuck Hoffman, Finance Administration Committee. Chuck, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to start by saying a few words about fiscal twenty, fiscal year twenty five. Uh, one of the things that we've put in place in the last year is that Vice President Case is providing the entire committee monthly finance reviews. Um, so we're keeping a very close eye on the budget and I am very pleased to tell you that we have already exceeded our fiscal year twenty five revenue budget. Um, that's, that's huge. Uh, our expenses currently as of, uh, May first are running about eighty percent. Revenue's not gonna increase much over the next couple of years. Expenses, of course, will increase, but at the end of the day, we expect to meet our budget predictions for fiscal year '25. So that's very big. Later on, tomorrow, we'll be talking about fiscal year '26. Vice President Case will be presenting the preliminary budget to you from Romania. I just want to point out, she's not doing that from Romania because she had to flee to Europe because things are looking so bad. Rather, she is able to take a little bit of time off and enjoy herself because we have come pretty close on the preliminary budget. There is a gap, and you will see a gap between where we're recommending on the preliminary budget and our 20% fund reserve. But there are a lot of unknowns right now, and we don't have our state funding identified yet. Just to show you, we were able to find a quarter of a million dollars between April 9th and April 30th in the co-chairs' budget. We found the Navigator funding, and we found blocking out what the other funding was, but it was student intern funding. So it was buried deep in the co-chairs' budget, not where we expected, but we found it. So there's a quarter of a million dollars that we found right there. We don't know our enrollment numbers. There's just a lot of unknowns. So the beauty of what we do with the preliminary budget and then coming back and finalizing the budget in October is that everybody can get a good idea of what the numbers are with preliminary budget, and then we can come back and do the final numbers. We will present to you a budget that meets the 20% ending fund balance. And if there are tough decisions to get there, you will get to make them. So and then finally, guess what? Yeah, that's right. We're starting on fiscal year '27. So yeah, we're already getting started on that. So good news is, you know, as hard as '25 was with the $5 million in cuts, you know, the president and staffs and boards work on getting that to 20.5%. And just a personal note, I will say that during the presentations today, I ran into a student who is from Harper. Some of you know where Harper is, maybe all of you. She wants to go to dental school, and she wants to come back and practice in dental and practice dentistry, and I'm hoping to set her up with a dental school scholarship at Pacific Northwest. So I was very excited about that. That's all.
Thank you, Finance and Administration Chair Hoffman. You are doing an exceptional job, keeping us updated.
Only because I'm surrounded by
Yeah. You are engaging very, very well and doing a great job. Thank you. And so for us, we now have a time. We're going to have Trustee Brad Stevens. This is his last meeting, and he is going to share some final words with us. Trustee Stevens has served on the board for nine years. Brad, would you like to share some thoughts with us?
Yes, thank you. It's nice to be at the meeting. I'm sorry that this is my last meeting, but it's great to be here. And I'm also sorry that I'm doing this via Zoom. I have a grandson that's graduating from Purdue in Lafayette, Indiana, and so that draws me away. And since we're traveling, I won't be able to actually finish this meeting now or tomorrow's meeting, but I appreciate having the chance to be here. So I just want a few thoughts. It's hard to realize, but I've actually been involved with Eastern for 50 years, 50 years. 1975, I came to La Grande to start my orthopedic practice. And came from the East Coast, but we wanted to be out here in one of the small towns with a college, had to raise our three sons, and we picked La Grande. And I very quickly became quite involved with Eastern. I covered all the football games. I played football in college myself and was very much enjoying that. And I got a chance to get to know these athletes well because of injuries. And then I also would see other students who were injured. They'd be referred, and I'd get to see them. And at times, I would go and give little talks on sports medicine to different classes and that sort of thing. So I really kind of got into the flow of Eastern and really got to love it. Our kids went to Ackerman Lab School for grade school, and that was Sister Bernice was a first-grade teacher. It was so wonderful. And we did that. I got to be good friends with a number of professors who had kids our age. And I frequently would come down to Quinn at noon, and we'd walk for an hour run out Foothill Road back. And I could hear the inside stories of all the stuff going on at Eastern. I got the inside road. So I got to really appreciate all the pros and cons and things like that. So that was really wonderful to be involved with Eastern. But then finally in '93, after 18 years, my sons were graduated, and I had a chance to go back to Lake Placid and work with the Olympics there, and I did that. But then in 2007, when I was ready to go to part-time work, I came back to Willow County in Joseph in '93. And I very much at that time wanted to get re-involved with Eastern, and so I joined the foundation and were the trustees and eventually became Secretary of the Foundation. And Tom Insko at that point was Chairman of the Foundation. And then in 2015, as we all know, Eastern finally got its own board. And Tom Insko, who was actually had been on the board, but ended up being applying for the job, was hired. And so they needed a replacement, and so they asked me if I could come in. So I came in in Tom Insko's footsteps, and that was in 2016. And then, as George mentioned, I've had two four-year terms and this last term to add in because he didn't have someone to fill. And so it was really great to have a chance to do that. So I also eventually got involved and got to be Chairman of the Finance Committee and worked very hard with that. And as you've all gone through this, we've had many challenges that way. The thing that's to me, and George, you spoke to this very nicely at this point, about how special Eastern is. And to me, the students, and as you all know now, getting to know the students and realize what we're doing is so important and so rewarding. We have such a wonderful, diverse student population, coming from rural backgrounds, first generation, Pell eligible, all these sort of things. Really a good, hard-working young students that get here. And I had a quick little story, and George will like this. It's a football story. When I was taking care of the team, there was one athlete that was the defensive end. And I noticed that he was, you know, kind of moving a little slow, gimping a little bit, but the trainers would not let me see him. And I guess the kid said, I don't want to see the doctor no matter what happens. And so finally, after the season was over, I could see the kid. He was a nice big kid and checked his ankle out. Got an extra, heck, he fractured his fibula at his ankle. So he played all year with a broken ankle. And not only did he play football, but he worked on it safely at night, and he wanted to keep working because he couldn't. He couldn't not work because he couldn't get through school. He didn't raise more money. And so that's a classic example of an Eastern student. So I just think that students are what are so magical here, and I just feel so much rewarded for having a chance to help them out. The other great thing here, of course, we talk about this all the time. We have small classes, and we have devoted professors that get to know the students real well. And I think it's a wonderful learning environment. I think it's just advancementism. And if a student, if a professor gets research going, then the undergraduate gets to work with it. We don't have a lot of graduate students in the way of that. So we also have a wonderful staff of professors that are devoted to our students and spend time to get to know them and counsel them, and I just find that special. Of course, we all have challenges. We know all these challenges. And you know, nationally, the higher education is being challenged. And we're seeing this now a little bit because of enrollment that Dr. Ryan has talked about. So we're just, that's what we're going to have to work on. You know, our expenses go up about 6% a year. So how do you match that? You can't raise tuition to do that. So how do you do that? Well, you become more efficient, those sort of things. But really, you have to increase enrollment, and the way to increase enrollment is new programs. We've experienced that with some of the new programs we've had, but we're going to have to invest in new programs to hopefully help ourselves to expand. So just finally, you know, and Chuck has talked about this, and I hate to let you guys know this, but you had a doctor taking care of your finance committee, and now you've got another doctor taking care of the finance committee. This might be a challenge, but Chuck's up to it, I know. Anyway, I just know the future is good. We have such a, President Ryan is so special for us. She's so devoted. If you read through all the things she did and she wrote to us about it, I just can't imagine, Kelly, you've got all those things done. It's just really impressive. But she understands our situation and knows where we need to go and is working so hard. So we're really fortunate to have Kelly and Dr. Ryan there. We have a lot of really good, Vice President Leanne Case, I worked with closely for a number of years, and she's right on it. She's really fantastic. Even if she's off the other side of the world, she's still really good about getting the numbers right. And I really have a lot of faith in what she's doing. And of course, we have Chris Buford to keep us all legally in line, and Tim Seidel's going over to get us all the state funding and all that sort of stuff. So we're really in good, we're really in good state. So I'd just like to say thank you to all of you. I appreciate it having been on the board. I'm glad to see that you folks are working with the students, and I think that's a reward. And I do remember in the past, we used to have different functions after every meeting where there was a student presentation we'd go off to. And I'd like to see us, I'd like, I think it'd be great to go back to that. But anyways, thank you all, and just go get them. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Stevens. I did write down some thoughts real quick, so I'm going to say this, and then honestly, if any of our trustees want to say anything, I will give you a quick moment. But I wrote down Brad Stevens. Here's some adjectives that I would describe you. Wise, kind, smart, a great fiduciary, very talented. You're goal-oriented. You're thoughtful of our vision, our direction, our use of resources. You have been a collaborative person, a humble person, a person that sees the big picture. You are dedicated and consistent, and you are a servant leader. So that's how I saw you, and that's how I see you. Thank you, Brad. Is there anybody else that would like to make any comment? Okay.
I might get a little emotional, but I did write Brad a letter last year when I thought he wasn't coming. Brad was, oh, here I go. I am getting emotional. He was just the first person who was kind to me when I arrived here. He showed me around Joseph, literally took me on a tour of the town. I got to meet his wife and see the museum. And, you know, it's a hard job. It's a wonderful job, but this is a hard job. And Brad has always been so supportive, and so you're just going to be really missed, Brad. I really appreciate it, having you on the board.
Thank you.
Any other trustees? Trustee Hoffman and then Trustee Crone.
Well, yeah, I've had the opportunity to work closely with Brad for 45 years. It's going to be hard for me not to get choked up, too. Brad, when we had orthopedic problems at Baker, we needed to send him to La Grande. And Brad and his partner Ken Germain would call him up, no matter what time of day, no matter what day it was. It's a send them over. That's exactly what you'd say, isn't it? Send them over. So Brad, professionally speaking, as well as service on this board, I just want to thank you for being a great friend of Eastern Oregon, not just the college, but the entire community.
Thank you.
Vice President Crone.
Well, Brad, you're the kind of person that I think we all, as trustees, would like to emulate. And I haven't known Brad. I met him when I became a trustee. And when you say kindness was one of your traits, Brad, that's how I felt. You, I felt like you kind of gently took me under your wing a little bit and talked with me. One of the things that you did as a committee chair, you wanted each one of the members to take a turn and to talk about what Eastern meant to us. And that's a lot of pressure to put somebody under, first of all. But I think it was such a lovely thing to do for us all to remember always why we're here. And also, it gave us a chance to share a little bit and also to hear from each other. But it kind of amplifies your approach to human interaction and to your life in terms of valuing people and relationships and institutions like Eastern that promote and extend community and relationships. So thank you for that example.
Thank you.
Trustee Reel.
I'm going to sound a little bit repetitive, but I did want to take a moment to say that I really appreciate it working with you, Brad. And when I joined the board, similar to other experiences mentioned here, you're very supportive and definitely helps lead me on the way, especially through the Finance Committee. I was on that day one and really appreciated your leadership, a lot of how I've approached the board and the questions I'm trying to think about. You know, you were a good and direct example of that for me. And I remember we set time aside when I was first on the board. And you, as well as a prior trustee, Bill Johnson, separate meetings, kind of walked me through on what we want to be thinking about when people are up there presenting different reports. And there's a lot of numbers, a lot of long reports, but there's always something that's important to ask. So I wanted to say that I really appreciated that, and you will definitely be missed on the board, but hopefully have the opportunity to see you outside a time or two after this. So once again, thank you, and go off to bigger, better things.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Brad. Thanks for all that you've done. I'm going to move forward. Chris, has anyone here today requested an opportunity to give public comment?
No, no one has.
Okay. Well, that concludes our public comment section. Consent agenda. We have now come to our consent agenda. Consent agenda items are voted on as blocked without discussion. However, on Saturday, Trustee Chuck Hoffman indicated that he wished to discuss Item E, which is a recommendation related to public record-keeping for meetings, to be further discussed. And then Trustee Hoffman also asked that we discuss Topic F, which centers on the board chair and the president not being voting members of the Academic Affairs Committee and Finance Administration, and to only assist as voting members when necessary to form a quorum. What we will do is remove Items E and F and add them to the end of our meeting. This will become meeting topic eight in our board meeting. We will discuss that as the last item of the day, and we will basically seek to understand, potentially get consensus, and to take action. There's a chance that if we can't reach consensus, that I'll potentially say for us to bring it back to the committees again and for people to discuss it further if we can't reach consensus or take action. As an opportunity, if there are any other board members that wish to discuss other consent agenda items, please say so. And they will be removed from the consent agenda, and we will be added to our regular agenda at the end of the meeting as well. So moving aside from that, I'm going to hear a motion to approve the consent agenda specifically for Items A, B, C, D, and G for items A, B, C, D, and G in the consent agenda. So I'll take any motions.
So moved.
It's been moved by trustee Real.
Second.
Second by trustee Mabit. Do you want to do a roll call, sir? Or can we go with the yes?
Let's, let's do our usual yeses for this one.
All in favor, pre-say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, we have a federal higher education policy overview informational presentation from President Ryan. President Ryan will give us an overview of the constantly changing landscape of our federal higher education policy and budget. President Ryan, thanks for all that you do and for your work on this topic today.
Thank you, thank you. So it's, it's been a while since trustee Hoffman, who seems to be the man of the day, requested this particular item. And, and if you had asked me what I would have presented a month ago, just being honest, it would have been totally different. So just a lot of changing gears. I think even this presentation's organizational structure is emblematic of, of the times that we're in. So there's quite a few issues we could have discussed today. I'm just going to do two of the top ones. But of course I'm open to talking about whatever is, is on the top of your minds. Since January, there's been a slew of federal executive orders related to higher education on immigration, DEI, trans rights, workforce development accreditation, and he, each do come with threats of loss of monies for infractions or, you know, perceived non-compliance. And many of these orders are actually being worked out through, through legal cases. The process that I've undertaken with each of these is to evaluate each of the orders as they come in. In addition to, you know, some dear colleague letters, seek legal counsel both here at EOU. Also the American, you know, the national associations that we belong to, like the American Association of State Colleges and Universities, the American Council on Education, the Chronicle of Higher Education. We also receive state guidance. I meet with the Oregon presidents quite a bit. I liaison with HECC and of course I use my own substantial network to, to figure things out. My goal in all of these, these cases is to protect the university both now and in the future. And for me, the university is of course protecting and caring for our students, our faculty and staff, and making sure that I'm acting with compassion. At present, when I do a threat assessment, the two most pressing concerns that directly affect the university are the budgetary proposals and a fallout from this highly critical lens on higher education. I'll start with the budget. This will be the long piece. So the newest information is that there's a plan to cut $12 billion from the education department, eliminating department and sizable cuts in staffing. For EOU, this has several ramifications. The first is of course, our application for the adults in custody program will most certainly be delayed. In addition, you know, we may see delays in the way that our title three grant is serviced, though Beanie assures me so far she has not seen such a thing. We do know that response times to financial aid questions are being delayed at other universities. And this has, this has caused concerns among students. The National Association of Student Financial Aid Administrators recently delivered a survey. And 60% of colleges note that they're fielding more inquiries from students. And this is because of the uncertainty about, I think Pell, among other issues. 59% of colleges are reporting noticeable changes in response time of the financial aid office. 47% described students getting confusing information, though arguably given the fallout from the FAFSA debacle under the previous administration, this might be a continuation of things. 42% of students are running into issues with federal loan servicing. Next up, I would say on the budget that is concerning to me is the plan to eliminate Trio. The plan to reduce that budget by 1.579 billion dollars. EOU put in a Trio proposal last year as part of our larger enrollment strategy. I think it's critical that we engage particularly in rural Oregon where we know that there's lower college going rates, reaching deeper into a pipeline of first generation students. So that strategy is, is sort of hanging out there right now. There's a plan to cut for federal work study, $980 million in cuts there, the effect on EOU. Well, work study support has ranged from 115 to 189,000 over the last five years. So could be some effects there. We also are recipients of supplemental education opportunity grants. These come in at about $84,000. And then the big ticket item is, is obviously Pell, right? It's our hope that Pell remains unaffected, but it will experience a $2.7 billion budgetary shortfall in the next academic year, $10 billion for '26, '27. In my opinion, Congress should be planning to support students because higher education historically since World War II has been a pathway to improve financial situations, job security, and produce the graduates that each of our communities need. Across the U.S., 30% of students use the Pell, 38% here at EOU. So we have a little bit higher levels. 41% of our students have federal loans. One of the proposals to reduce federal Pell funding is to increase the number of credit hours required of students to achieve the Pell. As I mentioned in my opening comments, this can be really dangerous just because we have a lot of working adult students, right? So they're going to be required to take on more credit hours than they would have previously, which could strip as much as $15,000 off of the maximum Pell award for those who take, for example, 12 credits. Ultimately, when you think about what a student experience is like, and of course we do want our students to take as many credits as they feasibly can because they're more likely to graduate. Time to degree at the end of the day is a resource challenge, right? There's financial pressures, there's family obligations, limited course offerings at a small school like ours. And, and credit loss can, from transfer. So, so a lot of issues there. The other plan that's on the table right now is to penalize colleges and universities through what I believe is an unfair new risk sharing model that ultimately disincentivizes us from taking low income or part-time students. Under the proposed College Cost Reduction Act, this act was framed as something to make sure colleges had, quote, "skin in the game." But this risk sharing provision would require institutions in the direct loan program to make annual payments to the federal government if a portion of their borrowers defaults on loans are not forgiven. And so, you know, you wouldn't do this to Macy's. So why are you doing it to your public higher education institutions? Risk sharing provisions like this ignore the reality of institutions like ours that have a very deep sense of responsibility for student outcomes and success, particularly for our kinds of students who, many of which are part-time and they're low income. And so applying this kind of one size fits all model across all of higher education, it just quite simply doesn't work for ERU. We're here to expand opportunity, not to be penalized for delivering a product. For me, this perversely incentivizes my institution to only accept rich and wealthy students. If I'm to, to be able to uphold these limits. I'm proud to say our default rate is a mere 1.3%, but that's a million dollars a year. We all know we don't have that in the budget. The second threat is, I think, more personal. So I would say that all of this activity has a, a bad effect on the morale of the faculty, staff, the students, the administration. It's, and it's not just morale, it's lost time. It's lost energy digging into these issues. I think regional public universities have been squeezed for quite some time. It's not like the state government loves us, federal government doesn't love us, right? There's just this squeeze and there's this also high loss of confidence in higher education. In addition to the impending demographic issues, all of this just feels like a, a little bit of a pile on. And I think the difficulty for us is to develop strategies that are going to last in this environment. It's difficult to plan in an environment when there, the ground is, is really unsteady. But we continue obviously to believe in the work. We're not here, I, I guess the thing I want to say too is faculty, staff, administration, we're not here to be culture warriors. We're here because we believe in the value of higher education. We've witnessed what higher education does for individuals firsthand. Those of you at the lunch today, you saw it. You saw those students faces. You saw what we do. We see students grow at the university. Faculty found their passion in their subject matters and they've devoted their lives to it. And it feels sometimes like what we've spent our lives doing has just become so critically questioned. Budgets are being reduced across the nation and for the first time at really wealthy and large institutions too, not just at smaller ones like ours. And this is just, you know, I'm being very honest with you. It's a difficult burden for our faculty and staff and their, their daily lives. They deserve certainty. They, they desire certainty. And students are increasingly squeezed as well, particularly, you know, some student groups. Of course, it is my job to find solutions and we are working hard to lend support to affected students groups to help people find comfort. And of course, as I mentioned, a lot of advocacy, we're doing quite a bit of advocacy. Indeed, it's taken up more time than previously and we'll continue doing all of that work, of course. This isn't a blue or red issue. This is a higher education issue. As the state of things normalizes, I do worry a bit about the mental health of my colleagues. We're fortunately on the cusp of summer and so hopefully that will give people a wee bit of break and slow down and they'll have time to adjust and reflect as we've kind of gotten used to, I think, you know, as people say, a new normal. We're going to continue to monitor and advocate through the summer, but we're also very much so back to business at hand. All of us still, of course, find joy in what we do and we're going to continue to lean on each other in our community. And we're not going to let any of our strategies be left in the dust, but make no mistake, all those budgetary lines that I mentioned are a huge threat to this university. I continue to be proud of the way EOU has risen to the occasion and I think will continue to rise, but there are very severe challenges that we face right now.
There you go. Inspired and hopeful. We got this. All right. Just in case though, does anybody have any comments or questions for President Ryan?
Thank you, President Ryan. When I asked her for this update, obviously we were all pretty well aware of, of the implications. So yeah, it's just, I think, something for the entire board to keep in mind. As things go forward and, and we can, we can advocate. One, one question I, I wanted to ask you is, is there any sort, you are aware of, of a regional public university caucus in DC? Does that, is that a thing? Because of it is, you know, I think some sort of national advocacy, even though I understand Representative Benz is one of 435. You know, I don't know that you could have anybody with closer ties to this university than he has, so.
Yeah, and we did get the opportunity to meet with him a few months ago. And yeah, that American Association of State Colleges and Universities is our representative body. That's the one who, for example, in April went and did do this very work of lobbying and continues to engage and create, you know, petitions for us to sign, things like that. And it really does a good job, I think, of starkly laying out what the difference is between, for example, an EOU and like a, you know, say University of Oregon, right? Because it is a different position that we're in. But yeah, that is our, our body and I'm happy, I'll shoot an email to y'all afterwards because I think their website may be useful to you in this moment. They have an advocacy corner and it, it, they're a good organization.
To, to add to trustee Hoffman's question, this might be good for, for you and for vice chair or vice president Seidel. What do the Widens of the world or the Bents of the world or the Merkleys of the world say to you with the federal funding? Or anything that they're trying to stop or to support with?
Thank you for that question, Chair Mendoza. What we hear primarily from legislative leaders on the other side of the, the carpet or the other side of the aisle, as we so say it, is a lot of frustration and like saying things like, well, we would love to support that. We just don't have any power right now. I think they're all in a little bit of a, of a frustrated state for it. I will say, and, and I'll comment on this more tomorrow, but we've had numerous meetings with our senators and I have not seen them kind of worked up like this in a long time. They're pretty, pretty frustrated with what they're seeing at the federal level. And most of it's because of the impacts on the, the state of Oregon and the, the people that they're trying to serve. So they're, they're working on it. They're hoping for something to change perhaps in the midterm elections, which will be coming up. I think that's why we're seeing a lot of these changes taking place right now in the federal level. They're trying to rush things through before something may change. Keep in mind that the Congress is pretty thinly divided. There's, there's not many seats to switch back and forth. And if there are changes, substantive changes in the midterm elections, that will slow things down pretty significantly at the federal level. Anything else? Did I miss anything, President?
I guess I would share, you know, Benz is concerned about natural resources. You know, that's really where his interests lie. And we have met with him and we have, we've shared our piece and we're going to send him along a few items and we maintain our advocacy there.
Yes. One of the things Congressman Benz asked for was if we could provide some mapping information around the location of our alumni, particularly in congressional district two. So he could leverage that with legislators in DC to show that people that are graduating from Eastern, where are they going? Are they staying in these regions? That's, henceforth, we need to continue to support schools like Eastern and those regions. Because we were, you know, constantly making the, the argument that we're the ones that are supplying the teachers and the business professionals and the doctors and the lawyers in a lot of these rural communities. They are coming to places like Eastern and they are, I just, if you had lunch today with any of the Oregon Teacher Pathway students, talk to them. Where do they want to go? Back to their hometowns. They want to go teach back in their, and that's where they're coming from and that's where they're going to. And if not, as we all well know, you hear pretty loudly and clearly that we have a shortage of nurses, of educators, of professionals in really any area in these rural communities. So it's vital that we continue to advocate that way. And it was, it was, we were glad to hear that and we're working on that map right now.
I would share too, now that I, I think of it, Merkley did, Merkley staff did right back to us that he's going to try and press on Trio in particular. That's something that's been important to him historically.
President Ryan, I'm just wondering if all the trustees are familiar with that acronym or what the Trio program does?
Yeah, the, the Trio program is a program that really helps low income, first generation students both find a pathway to college and then get supported once they're there.
Support system, wraparound type services. Is there any trustee, any other trustees that might have questions or comments? Vice Chair Crone?
I just have, just wondering if there's, if there's been any sort of leadership movement within the, the truths or from HECC in terms of a unified response or communication to our federal government as a group, if that's something that could possibly happen?
Yeah, we've worked on a, a letter to send our federal delegation that we've all signed. And then I met with Mark Browning and Dana Young, our other Eastern Oregon community college presidents to talk about maybe a joint letter to Benz because we're all, we're all affected in the exact same way. Rick Bailey of Southern actually went to Ask You's Lobby Day, I should share. And then Carl Schultz just met with Benz and all the other Oregon delegation as well and sort of heard the same thing. Yeah.
Well, I, I guess I would appreciate, I appreciate that you're advocating. You're going to our nation's capital, you're sending letters, you're working in small groups, you're working individually, you're probably doing everything you can do. It's about as good as we can do, I bet. Thank you for the update. We're ahead on time, my friends. So are we good with the break or do you, I don't think we have, unless, good for a break? What are you thinking?
Sure.
Good for a break. So let's have, let's have Beanie be ready to present at 2:20 and that gives us around 14 minutes at least. And maybe 2:20, it might be 2:25, but hopefully it's close to 2:20. We're going to take a break. Welcome back, my friends. Associate Vice President Beanie Moses will now share with us a presentation on Student Success and Belonging Grant Title III. As some of you may be aware, at this time, Associate Vice President Moses will do this presentation, it doesn't really have a, so anyway, no matter what. Beanie, you're a big deal, we're glad that you're here. You're going to do a great presentation, I know you are. You may proceed.
Thank you so much. Good afternoon, everyone, thank you for having me. I'm here to provide an update on our Strategic Equity Initiative, the Title III Bridges Program. And BRIDGE stands for Bridging, Building Roadmaps in Development of Guided Experiences for Students. And I was thinking about this coming here and, and I was like, I feel like, I don't want to call myself Chris Kringle, but I feel like I come to do this once a year, so every 12 months. So it's really nice to be able to come and see you and get a chance to just share some of the work that we're doing, the different types of initiatives. So focusing on the Title III Grant, this grant is a federally funded investment grants that supports our efforts to improve student retention, academic support and strengthen our overall campus infrastructure. This grant really helps us to be able to create a more structured, intentional pathway for all of our students. With consideration to those who are first generation, low income and rural students to navigate their college experience through coordinated equity-driven support systems that foster student agencies belonging and also persistence. The three goals in the grant are specifically academic program, institutional management and fiscal stability. Under our academic programs, we hope to improve student retention, engagement and graduation rates by systemically evaluating and strengthening academic program services, academic support services and curriculum design. And these include enhancing our first year experience program, proactive advising, expanding access through experiential learning opportunities and fostering a sense of belonging for our students. And, and by aligning these efforts, we really hope to support inclusion and a learning environment that allows our students to have the tools that they need and the community to be able to ensure that they're successful. Under our institutional management, the goal is to improve student career readiness through experiential learning opportunities while also strengthening the technological infrastructure needed to support curriculum development and expand our access to these opportunities. And then fiscal stability really allows us to increase first year student retention into the second year and supporting completion goals, which also then is part of our overall strategic goals of retention. And I'll go through and just kind of talk a little bit about the specific strategies that are outlined in the Title III. So the first one is academic advising redesign. Actually, I think I'm, sorry, so this one, I'm going to just talk a little bit about the six components of the strategic priorities that are within the goals that I talked about. So redesigning academic advising is really looking at how we can shift to a more proactive advising model. One that really emphasizes relationship building, early intervention and high impact practices across all departments. This includes also providing additional staff and extensive training to ensure that students receive consistent, informed guidance through their academic journey. Second one is the corequisite writing and math. And this is really looking at reviewing our current traditional remedial courses in both math and writing and developing a corequisite support models that can help students complete gateway courses as well as be able to be on track to graduation. The third one is thinking, looking at a comprehensive first year experience program, which involves establishing a coordinated FYE program to help students feel a sense of belonging, develop their academic identity and successfully transition into college. This is really important also to be able to have us look at retaining our students from first year to second year. And again, really focus on our retention goals. This is very sensitive area. This is very sensitive, I realize. And I really, I appreciate it being sensitive because I would like to move on, but it's, there's a lot of strategies. Also, the experiential learning, this one is really looking at integrating internship, graduate, undergraduate research, and then community-based learning into the different degree programs that we have on campus. This really helps the students be able to connect their coursework into real-world application and build their professional skills as well as thinking about how they become civic, civically engaged in their communities. We're also looking at institutional technology and data use improvement, which is, a part of it is upgrading our system so that we can better track student progress, identify at-risk students earlier, and equip faculty and staff with the tools that they need to make timely intervention. Specifically, this is really focused on our Acolog program, which is a curricular software. And then lastly, it's our strengthening our equity and belonging initiatives. This includes hiring a retention coordinator that is going to collaborate with different groups on campus, developing targeted programs that support our students as well as, especially those who are from underserved communities to help them feel welcome, seen, and also able to access support services that ensure that they're able to, that they can succeed in their college experience but also in their coursework. This also really helps us think about how we can start to envision us as a student-centered institution. So what?
Just going back to that slide and when, when I see core requisite support model, just to explain that further, I'm, I'm following for me that they're getting support during that class instead of a remedial class, but are they taking that, I'll just say, are they taking writing 121 with a tutor or with a person that's supporting them? Is that how?
Yes, so it's a, it's a combination. So it's looking at core requisite courses, and thank you, Peter Piddle will explain it more. I'll give you kind of a general, but they're looking at remedial courses and what support systems are in place for that, which includes not only tutoring and that support, but also how they're training tutoring, how do faculty look at current curriculum, and whether it is current and high-impact based on the diverse demographics that we are working with in our institutions. And then I'll pass it to Peter.
One such example that comes to mind is for our Statistics 243 course, which many, many of our majors have to take, which also counts as a graduation requirement. The math department, as part of this project, developed a STAT 098 sort of parallel course, you know, where it walks students through the materials that are covered in the main course, the 243. And then the STAT 098 deals with potential barriers and issues, always in close connection with the main course. The instructor of the main course can say, "Well, I felt my students have difficulties in this. This was a hard concept for them." This thing goes to the support, the instructor of the support course, you know, to, to talk about more of this and help students get over this hurdle. We wanna do more of this, yeah, this type of alignment. We have in other courses what's called the STAT et eXcell support, which is similarly, it's sort of a tutoring system, but it's linked to a course and to the, as the materials go through the course. This is in addition to our general tutoring support that we're offering to the Learning Center, which is always available, but again, we have two legs. They are really, that we're trying to expand on this sort of general support versus the course-focused support for certain classes that have high failure rates and for students have difficulties.
Continue, I'm sorry. I just wanted to make sure that hopefully not just me, but other people understood more what, what we meant by core requisite.
Thank you. That's great. Yeah, so kind of the progress so far. So we're in our fourth year of the Title III grant, and next year is our last year. So some of the work that we've been doing over the past few years, the general work that I've been working with is to ensure that we are aligned with our timeline to really be able to kind of do check-ins. We've implemented different things, including like quarterly reports, timelines that allow the different leads in these programs, both our VPs and also the faculty and the staff who are part of this, so that we are, we ensure that we are truly meeting our, what we wanted to do to strengthen and position us to have an institutional plan that kind of be embedded as where this, this project or this initiative has funded some of those things, but creates synergies that really help us embed that into the current systems that we're working on. So I'm gonna share a little bit of our progress this year, but we've had progress throughout the first three years and we'll continue to do that. So you'll see on the slide that in year one, we had 76% actions in progress and, or completed, and then we went up to 96% this last year. And this year is our year four, so we just had our external evaluator a few weeks ago, and we are assessing that work, and we'll have a report coming out in about November of the next academic year. So we're doing a lot of good work around it. There's definitely been challenges with transitions, but those things have not stopped us from continuing to do the work. It's definitely hard when we have to kind of pivot, but people are coming together, the leadership who are really helping with, with this work have been able to, to adjust and allowed us to keep the momentum. So I'll kind of go through, and I appreciate Peter here because he might answer a lot more of the questions than I do specific to the academic affairs, but I'll give some, some updates on where we're at right now. So for proactive advising, we had some software changes because we worked with different company and it made the hard, the data tracking a little bit hard, but there are efforts right now that are being led by the provost to really look at what holistic and proactive advising can look like to align with our efforts. As Peter already shared, I'll just share a little bit for the core requisite math. They developed, they developed the fundamentals course for math, and now the work is around looking at what that can look like online. The faculty have started planning how to turn that in-person group style into an online version, which includes like talking to the faculty about how that's going to be implemented, working with the department and the dean's office on when and what is a good timeline for offering that course, reviewing STAT 095, which is a, which supports our current STAT 243. Again, this hasn't been taught yet, but the first in-person version was planned and implemented, I think this term. So that's underway. There's also some work around some self-guided math placement and tutorials to help students get placed into the right math courses. The department is also working on an online version of this work. The math faculty also created a draft version on Canvas that they're using to kind of do some building sets of practice questions and feedback that will help the students be better prepared for Math 095 and, and 111. So lots of good work happening there. Core requisite writing, part of that work is a .25 FTE for a program coordinator administrator. That role has been focused on doing a first-year writing placement, coordinating with academic advising in working to support students who are transitioning from when writing 115 to 121, looking at whether those students need to repeat that course, what is the gap, and then how do they supplement that gap as they continue to progress into writing 116 as well as the bridge between ensuring that the curriculum work in writing 16 is truly like helping them be more prepared to the writing 121 course, which is that college-level course. Some of the other work that they've been doing is providing trainings and assessing course assignments, looking at grading rubrics, and also tutoring policies to determine whether a consistent approach is needed across the board and what an action plan can look like. For our first-year experience program, this is our second year that we've incorporated the Come and Read program. The faculty have done that to the first-year experience seminar courses. We did a funding reorganization this year to be able to support a peer mentor program that really allows students to have a peer tutor or peer mentor that they can work with to navigate coursework and engagement opportunities while they're in their foreign uni classes. During this quarter, nine undergraduate mentors, I think Tim mentioned in one of his presentations, they were in New Orleans presenting in the First Year Experience Conference, and they also are now providing some of those opportunities to see how mentors can continue to develop and see what that work looks like in the field. There are preparations for some of these continued work for next year. And as we prepare for next school year, there's gonna be the annual FYE training to help the faculty really look at how to improve and revise their program curriculum. And the position announcement has just been posted for mentors, and once that's hired, they're going to be trained for getting ready for the new students coming in in the fall. Experiential learning, you, last, I think it was last spring when they came and talked and Rory talked about the work that he's been doing to integrate internship research and community-based learning. This year, they've really started developing a live website that is now live and for everybody to be able to utilize and see and access resources on. They developed seed funding as part of our funding redesign to be able to provide faculty an opportunity to develop courses and curriculum that really incorporate direct discipline-specific experiential learning opportunities for their students. So they have two levels of how faculty can get engaged in developing their curriculum, if it's current or if it's a new curriculum to help provide the support for, for that experiential learning opportunity to take place, especially when expenses, there's other, there's external expenses that are, are part of how it needs to be implemented. And as I mentioned, the technology and data use, we continue to do work around data to make sure that as we are working with a team, we're also looking at whether the data that they need to assess to be able to look at patterns, to be able to refine their curriculum is in line with what our institutional research can provide and how we can continue to collaborate. The technology that we use is Acolog, and that's a live software, curriculum software that really maps out the degree programs and outlines the courses that students can use to really think about or see a really clear graduation pathway. One of the things that these tools really help on is to make sure that there's no redundancy of students repeating classes. They can see whether they've, they've missed prerequisites. And it also helps faculty and staff to, to provide up-to-date curriculum tools that help students navigate their pathway. The other thing that is really exciting about this is it's, it's a way for us to reduce confusions of what courses are required and when they are offered. Lastly, the sense of belonging work. I think this theme runs through every initiative that we do, the intentionality of providing a space for our students, for the people who are, are doing this work to really think about what a deep commitment to fostering a sense of belonging looks like as they're implementing the work, whether it's through advising, curriculum alignment, or first-year programming. How do we do this in a way that meets students where they're at, help them feel seen and supported as well as valued? And our retention coordinator plays a viral role in that. You met T last week, it feels, or maybe last month, can't remember, it feels like it was just yesterday, doing wonderful work to make sure that we continue to see those gaps and also provide support for those students. And that is all I have for you, so thank you. If you have any questions, you can also ask.
Anytime in this presentation, or does anyone have any questions? Trustee Stanley.
Thanks, Chairman Doza. So my understanding from the slide deck was 96% of those actions have been rolled out, correct? Forgive me if you went over this and I missed it, but what, what are we still missing?
As, as I mentioned, we, some of the things that we have transitioned, so people who let the projects either moved on or we had gaps in hiring, so those are some of the ways. Some of the redesign include funding changes, so I'll use an example. One of the work around the first-year experience, we knew that we needed peer mentors, but there was no funding support for those things. So we, we spent some time looking at how we can make the, that program more impactful to the student experience, and that took time for us to look at how we can do that. And by doing that, we worked with, obviously, the federal government to make sure that there's an approval phase. But the, the progress, some of, and also, I guess I would also say, so those were probably some of the ways that we, we would redesign, and it didn't mean that we didn't complete the work, we just had to kind of see where we, as we think about our students, and we recognize gaps and challenges, we, we think about better ways to continue to that, doing that support. So it wasn't necessarily that we didn't complete things. We were able to look at how we can continue to develop, uh, develop processes and also think of a vision that really helps kind of keep us aligned with our strategic goals. I'm trying to think, there's one more I wanted to tell you.
And maybe example is experiential learning that had some early fits and starts, you know, some directions that didn't quite work out, you know, and that affected our completions scores, of course. Now, as you just heard, I think now we're involving more faculty, Rory Becker is leading it with the grants. We actually took money for a half-time position for experiential learning coordinator, and we had to get a permission from the Department of Education to convert that to faculty stipends, you know, to really go out and take it, particularly in these lower division courses with larger enrollment, to how to build in authentic experiential learning advice, advising, so not just the capstone, which oftentimes is individual staff, really get a larger range. So these, the proposals are out, you know, the application period is open, yeah, but now it's really faculty-driven now instead of the earlier time where it was sort of a coordinator administrator stuff trying to get this going. Again, that affected our completions scores, no, but I feel we are on a really good, good track now.
Fantastic. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, I was gonna just add, like, also in, some of these things that are in progress are not necessarily, the timeline doesn't necessarily end in one year, so it kind of moves from one year all the way to the, the next year, so it continues to be in progress until the end of the grant.
Trustee Smith.
Thank you, Chairman Doza. Thank, thank you, Beanie. That was a great presentation. I, I have two questions, but Dr. Geisinger, you talked about the experiential learning. How do, so is the partnering piece of that on the faculty that are setting up the experiential learning? How does partnering happen with communities or whoever these learning opportunities happen?
Sometimes this partnership happens with the rev, you know, but bringing up, making that connection. Oftentimes, it's really also the faculty connections and the community. They are embedded and they are reaching out for opportunities. We had great examples with actually a project in Hermiston, a political science professor took his 100 level course there, you know, that sort of was at first suggested, I believe, by the rev, you know, and then they, they kept going with it. The expenditures are, of course, traveled, but they did do their project with the city. So it's, it's a mixture of it, right? But we, a lot is in fact relying on, on conversations with the community, on outreach, on listening, you know, to get these things going. The money is supposed to help to get these connections established and, and do the.
Yeah, no, that sounds, sounds great. Of course, I'm thinking community, like geographically, you know, all the way down in Harney County, so.
Yeah, it's, it's, it is possible. Again, may not be frequent travel or anything like this, but I mean, with our video conference technology, there is so much possibility now to, to become engaged much larger. So, yeah, if you hear anything, please.
Well, I mean, I think I could, yeah, how to, how to make that partnership stronger and, you know, make it, make the connection to to those faculty that have, I don't, I don't really know, you know, how to, to know what they're interested in to, you know, make that connection.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you can easily go through, you know, Peter or, or I, and then And then we can connect you with the appropriate dean usually, and sometimes it's two or three deans, it depends on exactly what you're looking for because. You know, not, you know, every major produces a large skill set, right? But, you know, we're happy to make those those connections for you, you know, it's a small university and so we probably should have like a more. Um, process-oriented way of doing this, but I think our virality is. Just made this like a really intimate thing where someone's like, hey, I need someone, do you know somebody? Maybe that's not the best system, but it's certainly the system we have, but we can work on it in the future. I know Molly is thinking a lot about career services right now. Um, this is a a good area for us.
Well, I'm 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 the experiential person, I'll just say, so it always like comes to the top for me.
Two, uh, two other comments, if I may.
Yeah.
So that website that was meant that Beanie mentioned that is up, there's actually a data collection form on it where we encourage faculty to post their project. Projects that they have, and it's supposed to list, also there's one line specifically and there's. Well, what discipline are you in, but also could you use students from other disciplines? It's hard, as I mentioned before, I believe, for for every discipline to be authentic in their project every time. But you use this as a vehicle.
Yeah.
And then students can actually see the what's what's and uh the opportunities. Same thing for community members, they can see what the faculty members are doing and engage that way. So this requires more uploading and building it out, but at the stage said, and the other thing. This is really relying on ongoing community connections, because our definition of experiential learning, this is now, it's practical. It's reflective and it's also authentic, so we, it has to be authentic every time the course is offered.
Yes.
And that requires ongoing new projects and approaches, so. It's critical to have these community connections, lasting ones.
Yeah, thank you for that. Uh, my my other question is, does this uh Title III grant get ex- renewed? Do you have to reapply for it? Have, yeah.
Yes, it it does, but there has to be a gap here. Um, because we're part of Title V and Title III um federal programs, so um we can, depending on. Unspent dollars, um, we can extend if we have unspent dollars, if we don't, we end at our fifth year. And we have to have the gap here in order to reapply.
Trustee Gigan.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. Just a quick question, I I love experiential learning. Uh, it is a small community, so we don't really have a lot of businesses in the area. Which means that sometimes we have to be creative and innovative to to find those opportunities. And I was just curious, um, I I was at a presentation uh earlier this this term. Where we were talking about using experiential learning, but looking at processes within the university itself. Because we may not have internship opportunities or we may not have, because it's a rural area. Um, are these areas that that you might consider, maybe something in in career services or maybe something in admissions? That we could develop a project that we can then use as an applied-based project for a course?
Absolutely. I mean, again, the definition, authentic, practical, reflective, right? If it serves E O U, and we just had in a, in our leadership group meeting. There was a question about how do we make art exhibit accessible to online students? And of course, that brought in the suggestion, well, you know, we use some of the media students, you know, they can make uh high-quality recordings and we can post those. Great project, it's authentic, right? It serves on more students than just a narrow group, so, perfect.
And I will, I think there is work like that in progress, for example. The President's Commission on Student Success and Belonging, one of the students working on that project is actually doing it as part of an internship. In um, in working with Daniel Costi in my office and. Um, several like economic professors have also done stuff with the BIC and so, so there's definitely a lot of opportunity there.
Oh, I'm excited, that's, that sounds like, that sounds like a lot of fun, so.
Um, I would also add, I think um one of the really, the main goals of the grant is. Supporting not just kind of the idea of the strengthening institution is to create. Like systems and processes that really allow us to be able to know, how do we access, how is it transparent? Where do we begin to know what opportunities exist? So a big part of the work. Um, is really creating some of those pathways for everyone on campus to know. What is F Y E on campus? How does that, how do students get engaged in it? Um, where do faculty find their pathway to be able to look at the curriculum and how it connects to upper class? Uh, curriculum or degrees, um, so a big, a big component, and I'm just kind of speaking in general. But a big component of the grant is really to build some of those systems, or really ensure that the system starts and then the. It it can keep growing right from there. Um, so specifically to experiential learning, there's the two. Application processes is for courses that are currently in place and then the other one is brand new. So and it it is available online, so it allows for people to submit their ideas on what they want to be able to implement. In their coursework and a committee is already in place to review those things and then provide that support.
And if I may add one more thing, sorry, I can't stop myself here, but uh the website was actually developed by a graduate student. Who was funded from early, early, the early years of the Title III project, you know, his graduate assistantship. So I worked with him, you know, and we developed a website together, so that, again, that was a great project and again, now we have the website.
Trustee Lair.
Um, this has been a great presentation, um. I I think in a either A S A committee would fit or um even better board, I'd love to see. Some students and like showcasing one of these um projects. Um, it'd just be really neat and maybe like a little tickler that in one of the areas that may not lend itself to as much of that. Kind of hands-on or application-based learning, um, you know, we got to see the mammoth dig and it. Kind of the sciences and those kinds of things, naturally, sometimes we think of hands-on, so it would be neat to think. Of a program that all of us may not be expecting this like robust experiential piece of the puzzle in doing that.
Okay, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna move us on, but I'll say, I'll ask one final question and again, great presentation. Uh, one of my, I just would say thoughts were the outcome of this program, which to me would be. You know, that sense of belonging and connection and getting it right systemically and. Ultimate outcome, retention and graduation. Um, how is that ultimate outcome working out? Um, and then after that, with the the gap funds and how we operate, um, have we made it so that? We are fairly sustainable in that gap year, and then even if we don't get funded. Are there elements of the system that can still stay and how have you thought through that?
In terms of the outcome for the experiential learning, I mean.
Not, not experiential, the whole program and how it's impacting the students that are in the Bridges Program.
Okay, the whole program.
Um, I think in general, and I thought about bringing kind of student success. Um, we we are work, obviously, if I, I guess I, if I think about like this current time in higher ed, there are some challenges. With retention and student success, there are some goals within the grant, which like around like financial sustainability and that hasn't been. Really, um, it it, there's some challenges there, knowing that price of higher education has increased. Enrollment has decreased, um, so there are some um, some of those things, but in, in the. In the programs like experiential learning, um, we've seen the current students really see the value. Um, and so we know they work, um, but there are obviously always gonna be some of those. Larger external factors that uh make our ability to to really be as. Maybe successful, a little bit more of a challenge or maybe a a larger mountain to climb. I wanted to say, well, and I was gonna also ask, I guess in general, in terms of like where we're headed in terms of. Kind of funding and what that outlook, um, I might um ask Dr. Ryan to to answer that if that's okay.
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to share, you know, when we met with the external evaluators, uh, I think it was last week, I don't know, it's all bleeding together, but um. One of the things that we shared with them was it's such a unique experience for a small regional public like ours. To actually have investments that allow us to invest, right? And so what the grants allowed us to do is to like carve out positions, pay. Some of our staff in particular and some of our faculty for the work that they're doing and have additional people here. When that money goes away, we won't, we won't have that money anymore. Um, and though the goal of the grant, as Beanie noted, was to be able to create the fiscal sustainability. You know, I think the project needed more time. In part because it started during the pandemic and it wasn't the most auspicious time to be working on student success because. Um, we had massive hiring issues, uh, we finally now are at the place where all the positions are staff and all the ideas are going. And we have a year and and I know that, I know that if it had started a year later, we would have had more jump time. And so that that aspect of it is frustrating, um, and I think anyone here who who plays a role in hiring and in rural Eastern Oregon. Knows what it's like to try and and fill a position here, particularly one that requires um a little extra degrees or knowledges. So, um, we, we don't have the gap funding to maintain it, but um, one thing that we have seen though, you know, we want to share is retention has increased. Right? And enrollment decreased the la- increased the last two years, um, but it's not at the point where it's making three hundred thousand dollars, right? We've got a way to go for our student success efforts to start uh resulting in the kinds of dividends that this grant has really allowed us to lift up.
I was just saying, if there is a, a challenge, some of the systems, if there are certain systems that. We have some of the organization capacity to do, if we can keep some of those out of the nice, go ahead.
No, sorry, I couldn't think of what I was trying to say earlier, uh, and with regard to continuation, we do, we are starting to create a community. Particularly in the experiential learning field, you know, we're bringing faculty together and maybe pro- uh team up on project. We hope that that, that momentum, you know, that will stay, you know, and we hope that as we can show more. What what our students can do, you know, those who have worked with them know what they can do. There may be some, some funding and support there for for this aspect of it, and we know. I I'm talking a lot about this experiential learning because we know that our students' characteristics, they really benefit from direct application. They cannot wait, don't wanna wait until the last term for a ten-week project that integrates all the knowledge, they like this direct one. And that's why we're trying to infuse throughout the curriculum, it's a huge retention piece, but also. That students recognize as being most relevant for their career afterwards. So some things, I hope we create the momentum, you know, that sustains these conversations and, yeah, these desires there.
Very nice. Chairman Abbott.
Thank you, um, terrific presentation, um, I wanna just echo a little bit what trustee Smith was saying. Those of us who are not in Union County, I think there are lots of opportunities in our parts of the Eastern Oregon region for experiential learning. I know one pretty good success story, um, sitting at the table here, um, hope, hope she agrees with me. Um, so if there's an opportunity to maybe sometime just brainstorm. What those um experiential, experiential learning opportunities might be with um. Businesses that might not be in Union County, but they might be uh like a one-week employment opportunity in the spring or Christmas break or summer. For example, the Porta Moro has a really good paid internship program during the school year. And a really well-paid um internship program that they will help fund for all kinds of businesses. And that's just Moro County and there's a lot in Yumattila County, and that's just down the road a little ways, so. Um, I think you've done a great job and set the foundation, but as a trustee, I'm happy to be a resource. Um, if that's, if that's possible, Brenda and I can put them to work, right? Thanks.
That's, that's great, thank you so much, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Appreciate it all.
Alright, team, thank you so much, well done. Now it's time for a accreditation report. We have the seven-year conference report from the N W C C U, I don't know what N W C C U, I know it's Northwest. Accreditation and so on, but.
Pretty good.
Admission on colleges and universities.
That's right, yeah.
There are a few things more vital to the success of the university than maintaining its accreditation, this year we have. A very important accreditation milestone. Karen Clay will give us an overview of the process being used to prepare the university's seven-year conference of accreditation report. To our accredited body, the Northwest. Accrediting.
Commission.
Commission.
Colleges and universities.
Colleges and universities. Please note that this is an action item for our board. And and when, as we think of this as an action item, it is to approve the report as presented. And my understanding is there is some uh potential work that still will be done, but we're, we're likely. The mo- the goal is to approve the report as presented, knowing that there may be some adjustments. Or at least some finalization of data and information, is that correct?
That, that's, that's correct, yeah, so you see a draft and, but yeah. What's complete.
I would say the goal is to brief you about the methods being used to complete the report, because it's not that far along at this point. Uh, and so that you can have confidence in what's being done, and then the final report will be presented at the August meeting.
Okay, so we're we're approving uh the report in its current format. Or the work being done in its current format, is that correct?
Good, yeah.
Okay. Doctor Karen Clay, move forward.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Um, yes, I'm I'm gonna be talking about our year seven report for the N W C C U. Called the Evaluation of Institutional Effectiveness, and the first thing I want to do is give you some of the context for this report. So this is the culminating report in a seven-year cycle, so it's kind of the big important report. Last year, at this time, um, I talked to the board about a Policies, Regulations and Financial Review Report, which was the year six report. And that was submitted in August twenty twenty four, uh, um, this one's due in August twenty twenty five. The Policies, Regulations and Financial Review uh was a little bit more, uh, it. It was talking as expected about our policies and regulations and so forth, it covered the whole of the institution. Um, uh, like everything that we did, uh, but at a very kind of uh shallow level, so we had to have policies on this. We had to be be able to do that, we had to do the other. This one, Evaluation of Institutional Effectiveness, is really about. Our institutional effectiveness, which means our effectiveness at educating students. And so it it really goes into some depth about how we can know that we're educating students properly. So the report is uh, will be submitted in August, um, and then the site visit is scheduled. It's followed by a site visit from peer evaluators, these are uh three or four. Uh, of our peers from other universities in the Northwest, um, and that is scheduled for October twenty seventh to twenty ninth. And they come and kind of take a look at things and make sure that the report uh reflects what we're doing accurately. And then their findings, which they submit, uh, must be approved by the N W C C U Board of Commissioners. Um, and they meet in January, at the end of January twenty twenty six. What that means is we don't get the results until after that, so it's a good six months after the whole thing's done by the time we get the results. Uh, although we will get some unofficial results prior to that, so we'll know where we stand. Um, so we are uh currently seeking the approval of the board for this report based not. Oh, we're, sorry, we're resetting. So you can see. If you just start from the beginning, I'll just click.
Mister Chair, while we have a break, I'm just kind of confused by the process, I guess, or what we're doing. Is, are we approving the process or we are approving the actual plan?
What I'm, what I'm hearing is it's the process and the methodology that they're using to create the report. And then they'll give us a, an updated report in uh.
So. In August. Um, we are presenting some content for you that you can see, so you can have confidence in that we are on the right track with this report. Right? It will come to the board meeting at the, at that retreat, you know, at, as in a final version, right? But that's really, the timeline is, it's at around the submission date. So that's why we're here now to show you this on where we are, you know, and again, show you that. This is quite far along in its completion, but we still have to add some things.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wrote down accreditation report and the process and methodology being used, is that okay?
Yes.
Yeah. And, and just so you know, you do have an attachment on the cover sheet that lists all of the, the written work that's completed up till now, which is actually rather robust.
Yes, actually, we, I'm going to talk about the process. I'm going to give some highlights from the report. I don't want to say that the report is complete because although it's very close, I still want to be able to send it to our NWCCU liaison, who will be giving comments and feedback. And there's all kinds of little details that, you know, left to, left to do. It's not in its final form.
And then we'll move in the final in August.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
Does that answer enough? Trustee, okay.
Or you guys can decide what you want to see or not see in August. Okay, so first thing I'll talk about is the report creation process. And basically it, there's a lot of areas, they call them standards within this report and that are covered by the report. And then in order to create the report, the first thing I did was obtain, kind of identify the leaders, who is working on each of these standards and get their input as to what EOU is doing. And for some of the examples, just to give you an idea of what I'm talking about. The report asks about student learning assessment. There's a committee called the Center for Teaching and Learning Assessment. And those are the ones that I, I, you know, the chair of that committee is who I would talk to for input. When the standards ask how, what we're doing to address student equity gaps. Then I talked to our department of Beanie in the Department of Strategic Equity Initiatives and I get, and I get her input. All of the different contributors are listed in the contributors section of the report, which should be linked from the cover sheet on about on page three or page four. So there, there's quite a number of them. So we talked to the individual contributors and then once I get an idea of how the, how, what EOU is doing in the area, then I want to verify that EOU's approach fills, fulfills the standard. And also that EOU's approach is properly reflected in our web pages. Because, you know, we will have peers coming to review. And so that usually involves some, some back and forth just to make sure. And then finally, once, once I feel like EOU is in fact doing the, the right thing for the standard, then I just describe EOU's activities and demonstrate how they relate. So it's just a, you know, it's a fairly detailed process. So what I wanted to do now is just go through some of, I've, I've, I've got, I picked out four kind of report highlights. Because the whole report is pretty long and involved. And this is thanks to George Mendoza, who was asking me at the ASA meeting what my top three would be, takeaways. So I'm going to talk about the, the highlights of the report and hopefully that'll give you a feel for, for what we cover. The first highlight I want to talk about is mission fulfillment. So this report asks us to how EOU can show that we are feeling, fulfilling our mission properly. And we need to show it in a kind of fairly data-driven numerical fashion. So what I've done for that is we, we're going to the annual report here. And if I go across through to, there's a three-page spread in the middle. Every annual report has had this. And this is from our strategic plan. Oh, is it not sharing? Oh, Jeremy. Oh, Jeremy. Well, okay, you'll just have to, I think you'll just have to trust me on that one then.
Nope. Oh, no.
Our strategic.
Karen, do you want to wait a second and let them finish it?
Sure. Sure. Then you can see all the, the facets. How do I share this? I, it's a link. Okay.
So I have to come back out and fix that again.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, it may be tough to go back and forth, but but there's, there's what you see in the middle of the annual report. Sorry, I didn't notice that it was, oh, it's still not up.
Can Cody move the slides?
Hmm.
From the, from his spot?
It's shared online, it's not shared in here.
Oh, only, you can only see it online.
Cody, can you move it for Karen? Is there a way that you can do it from your side?
No. There we go. Okay, there. I hope this is. Anyway, you, you guys may be familiar with this in, in the annual report. It basically goes through all these key metrics, which are related to the strategic plan. They're the KPIs and some of them have been things that the board has discussed and kind of made, decided what they should be. And this, and they, they, they show the last five years of data in this annual report in the mission fulfillment section of the, of the accreditation report. I only show the last three years of data. And the ones that I'm concerned about are the top 10, the 10 that are along the top of the page that are called the key metrics. And I use them to just do a little evaluation as to whether or not we are evaluating as, as to whether or not we are fulfilling our mission. And now I just go. If I can find the PowerPoint, I'll go back to it. I think I can, right there. And I will just go to. Okay, it might take a little while, but I'll get there. So what?
Do you have another link that goes in the world?
I have one more link coming up, but I don't need to go to it. I'll just stick with, I'll stick with the presentation. If you put it, if you do presentation mode and start presentation from beginning, I think it might just work. Okay, there we go. Okay, so this is a table that summarizes our findings in the key metrics. And of course, I, I would be consulting with people in the area on these key metrics. But the, the first two are the financial ratios, the fund balance and the primary reserve ratio are the two that are picked out as key. And I know the board has discussed these a lot. The overall, our overall performance, I say, is within tolerance because they are within the kind of the, the parameters that the board set. And also there, although the fund balance did show a downward trend, it's starting to reverse. Now, keep in mind, this data is from last year. This is the 2024 annual report. The accreditors aren't interested in what we plan to do. They're more interested in what we've done. And because the data often tends to be a year behind, a lot of what I focus on is, is in fact a, a full year behind. But our overall financial performance was, is, was turning around due to some of the financial sustainability initiatives. And we're also expected to do a peer comparison. And there is HEC data for other Oregon public institutions. And when I compare us to our official, our official comparator, peer comparator, which is Southern Oregon University, we're financially, we're looking a lot better. So that was kind of handy. And then of course, future plans, which is a close monitoring of the situation and keeping an eye on things. The next key metrics have to do with enrollment, retention and completion. So the student achievement metrics. I can say based on the numbers that EOU shows consistent performance. It, it's a, when you compare us to our peers using IPAD's data and our reach, our national peers, we tend to be average to low, sometimes right on the median, sometimes slightly below the median. We're not super low, but we're not great. So we're consistent and also in 2024, we did have an uptick in enrollment and in retention. We're starting to get some retention and graduation upticks quite recently. So this is, this is positive. But the real takeaway is that this is an area of significant focus and one that we know we need to, you know, EOU knows we need to look at and that we continuously are looking at it in all of our processes. So that's kind of the, that's the worst news. The, the next one is our proficiency and student learning outcomes, which has to do with student learning assessment. The student learning assessment, there is no readily available peer data. And there's no conclusive analysis you can really do based on three years of data. Because the way student, student learning assessment works is they assess a different outcome every year. And recently they just changed the rubrics according to which they assess, they make their assessments. And so because of that, we don't have a full cycle of assessment in hand. And so it's very difficult to compare year over year and say, oh, EOU is doing better or EOU is doing worse. We can only make kind of a little more qualitative style judgments on, on how we're doing. Which of course I talk about in great detail in, in other parts of the report. The next metric is graduate success. So employment, this means employment or further education. And we give a survey to our graduates every year. When we ask them whether they are employed or seeking further education. And EOU does very well on this survey. There's an outfit called NACE, which also collects the same data through surveys nationwide. And when we compare our results to their results, we, we are doing better. And even if I look at, say, the NACE outcomes for all public universities or the NACE outcomes for all Western universities, EOU is doing well in this regard. So that's, that's good. And the final key metric is alumni giving participation rate. And again, we're doing well, especially recent, the, the 2024 year had a big uptick. And no readily available peer data for that either, but things are basically looking good. So that's, that's the overall kind of what we got out of the, the mission fulfillment. And another highlight I want to talk about briefly is the planning process. So they, they do expect, the accreditor does expect us to show that we have very comprehensive planning processes and they have a lot of required, related requirements. And I've just gotten written down here. What needs to be a continuous process to assess our institutional effectiveness. We need to show that our planning process is inclusive. We need to show that we monitor our internal and external environments to identify current and emerging patterns and trends. That just means do we use a bunch of data? And then we have a very wordy thing that uses our findings to assess our strategic position, define our future direction and make decisions essentially. So these are the kinds of, the kinds of things they're looking for. And what we've been, what we focused on since Kelly Ryan came into the presidency is really using these strategy groups, and I won't be taking you to the website because I don't want to screw things up. But there's, there's a website where there's a strategy groups kind of imposed over top of the strategic plan that relate to parts of the strategic, strategic plan. And these strategy groups were, are staffed by people from all over the university, a very inclusive process. And they focus on all the different aspects of how to reach our goals, our strategic goals in the university. And not only that, but there's also a kind of detailed implementation plans. And, and Kimberly's tracking them using project management software. And there's, there's pilot phases and there's assessment phases. And, and it's, it's just a really a work of, of art or whatever, not art, but a work of planning. And I think it will, it should impress our, our accreditors. So that was a, that was another highlight for me. Another highlight that I want to talk about, it's, 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 you know, education and assessment of education is really important to the accreditors. And so they talk about academic assessment. And for me, this was a difficult thing to, to kind of understand because academic assessment has its own jargon and its own, a lot of its own things. And I, 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 I want to try and tell you how we do it in very broadly. And I hope George Mendoza probably knows more about it than me, so I hope I don't. If it makes sense, but the, the, we need to show that our student learning process, first of all, is faculty driven. It's not supposed to be something imposed from the top down. And we do have our CTLA committee, which is a faculty committee, a faculty chair and everything else. So that's, that's very good for the process. We need to show that we assess, we need to create institutional learning outcomes and assess them across all bachelor's programs. We need to show that our program and course level learning outcomes are, basically we need to map our course level learning outcomes to our university level learning outcomes. And that, that mapping process allows the assessment to go on within the course. So if you have a university learning outcome, you have a course learning outcome that relates to that university outcome. And then you assess the students', the students' performance on this particular course level outcome. Then you can say how they're doing on your university level outcome. That's the idea. I bet, and there's a whole lot more to the process, which includes scoring rubrics. We have to, we have to show that we use a consistent scoring rubric, consistent across departments. We have to show that we give faculty training so that they know that they're, they're being consistent. And we have to have a timeline for the review so that we, well, so that we get it done. So there's, there's a lot to it, which we, which we do. And we also at the end have to show that we use the results to continuously improve our student learning outcomes, which, which we do because CTLA creates a report, which is then assessed by the CTLA faculty in order to kind of, and, and by the deans and so on, in order to kind of bring that information back to the faculty. So it's a, it's, it's a very complex system, which we do have in place. We made changes, as I said, quite recently in the last couple of years. So it's kind of still in its infancy. We had one software program that we were using and then switched to another one and so on. So I, I, I think there's been a couple of hiccups, but I'm really hoping that, that the, the accreditors recognize that we do all these things. And our final, the final report highlight that I wanted to talk about was student achievement. So there's an entire standard devoted to student achievement. And they, this standard is much more, I found it a little more prescriptive than some of their other standards in that they really want to tell us exactly what they want us to do, which, which is good in some ways. We need to, for to, for this standard, we need to identify our regional and national peers, which we've done. We need to show that our student achievement data is benchmarked against our regional and national peers, which is also something that we've, not that we've done, but that is done in the IPAD's report that we use. So there's various sources of, of regional and national student achievement data for our peers that we can use. We need to then show that we have these student achievement indicators disaggregated by race, ethnicity, age, gender, socioeconomic status, first generation student status and other meaningful institutional categories. So they're quite detailed there about how they want us to be looking at the data. And our, our IR department, our institutional research department has produced disaggregated data reports by all these categories and made them available. And we also have, we can also disaggregate our data in various other systems that we have internally, like our Millennium FAST system. And we can, we have used this disaggregated data to do some of the student achievement work that we've been doing, which is really good because the next, the next thing is that data, the data needs to be used to identify achievement gaps and implement strategies to mitigate gaps in achievement equity. That's what, so that's, that's what they want to see. And I think that here is where our strategic equity initiatives really are looking, are, are really providing us with some good fodder for this report. So as far as data-driven strategies, first of all, there's the Title III grant activities, which you were just hearing about. And although some of, a lot of those grant activities are not themselves data-driven, the Title III grant needs to be assessed and that assessment, which the, the. And that assessment, which the the assessment and evaluation is very much based on data. So they, I mean, the assessments that I've seen from the past year look at some very detailed data, especially on student achievement, like retention and enrollment, and show whether or not it's increased, like what the baseline is, whether or not it's increased to the goal. And indeed, the strategies do seem to be moving the bar because we are, the recent data is 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 pretty good. I don't know about the report that was given last week. I'm talking about data that's from about six months ago or more. So the other things we have under data-driven strategies. I think the A S A committee got to listen to some of the strategies that we've been doing with E I B. This micro grants for retention. They have taken a whole lot of data on our student body, disaggregated it by various factors and used it to try and identify the students that are most at risk of stopping out. And then offered those students small micro grants to help retain them because they are at risk of dropping out and we want to try and prevent that. A similar type thing has gone, is going on for holds analysis and for stop out analysis. They've gathered all kinds of data to try and kind of identify what types of holds, you know, all the types of students getting holds and what types of holds they have and why people stop out and what might prevent them from stopping out. And working with advisors to try and kind of put some, you know, to try and talk to these students and get these things to, you know, to prevent the stopouts and to especially those during, due to the holds. So all of these, all of these initiatives use disaggregated data. And and there, there, a lot of them actually have some reports, initial reports, which show that they are having an impact, a positive impact on our on our finances and so on. So it's been very, it's been very useful. So those are the four kind of report highlights that I wanted to talk about. And and really also, if if you, as as we go on, if you want to see the report i- in its kind of current, almost there, but not quite there state, there should be a link from the cover sheet as well. So I'd love to hear any questions or concerns.
I'm just gonna say it was a wonderful report, great information. Trustee Gigan.
Thank you. First of all, congratulations. That's a lot of work. I've led the the research on university accreditation and it's, thank you. That's just, that's a lot of work. But I didn't hear anything of any discussion about student engagement and if you're measuring that. Because that, there's a link between student engagement and student success. And and if we can prove that there, that we have an established link, it actually might be in our best interest. And I was just wondering if we report that to N C W.
We do have, it's not one of our key metrics, so I probably didn't talk about it. But we do have, for example, the N E S I, the N E S I survey on student engagement. It's one of the metrics that we highlight in the in the annual report. And so we look at that. You're familiar with it, I can see.
Yes, yes, I am familiar with it. That's where I would get the data from. But I I didn't know that that you did it for N E S I. I did it for H L C, which is a different, different regional, you know, university accreditation. But it was a big deal for us to link their student engagement to student learning outcomes. And so I was just wondering how we did that here.
Yeah, and we do use the N E S I report. But one thing that's frustrating about the N E S I report is it's only, we only use it every two years. And so we don't get a kind of a granular annual measure. And there's several things that are useful about that report. For instance, we have, there is a question on diversity and inclusion and so on. And and that's kind of useful to get a measure of how that's going on campus because that's a very difficult thing to measure on campus.
Thank you very much. And thank you for leading that. That's an awful lot of work. I can appreciate it. So, thank you.
Trustee Valerio. Trustee Valerio, can you turn on your mic, please? Thank you.
All right. Every seven years, we have to do this and it takes two or three years to write it. So whatever, it's it's an incredible piece of work. I can see the complexity of that. I have three, a couple of questions. Following up on on the question about engagement of students, does any portion of this include something about staff? This body of any public university does not function in the vacuum of academic achievements. So I wonder if this report asks anything about the staff component, much like we're asking or could be asking about the student. So that that's one, one thing to the.
That's, that's a good question because really, a lot of the this one really focused on student achievement and student education. The year six report from last year focused on the whole of the university. And that that had a whole section on H R and on staff. But lucky for us, we've, we've, we've already submitted that and and done fine. So we should be, we should be, we we don't have to revisit it in the year seven report.
Thank you. And I have another question that that pertains to an earlier slide was student achievement. At one point, it said that there are several disaggregated indicators, age, gender, ethnicity, et cetera. And then the language said, and and other meaningful institutional categories. Could you give me an example, another one to, and specifically, does the word rural appears in one of those?
That's a really, that's a really good question. And actually, yes. We do, the the category that we actually, we have a couple of categories that I've seen in our data that are not beyond what's just asked. I've seen us disaggregate our state data by veteran status because E O U does have quite a, quite a number of veterans. We do not, it's, we we could actually, that might be interesting. You could, that, that's an interesting question because that could be a very useful way of kind of creating a subcategory of students based on home address, geography, something like that.
We do, we do include, we do include our peer institutions, which are all rural institutions with a similar, yeah, remote location, similar size, similar program mix, similar access type, not open access.
So it's built into the definition of here.
And that I presented that last year in the I P E T S report, you know, and that's data we can pull from where we see a direct comparison, at least, you know, to other rural university and can benchmark ourselves in that. And that was a requirement from the report that we identify such a list, you know, and as our competitors.
Thank you.
Trustee George.
Yes, thank you. Just a question about this accreditation report. Is there any part of this report that looks at the infrastructure, the utilities, the buildings and other parts of the university?
We had a whole section on the facilities, the university facilities in the year six report. So yes, they, that's in in part of your policy, regulation and financial review. I think that's a real strength for E O U actually. So it's kind of, it would be fun to try and add it in somehow.
And maybe by way of background, the, in the past, you know, there was one combined year seven report that had everything in it. Last round, they decided to split those up based on the two main standards. And again, year six was the standard about policies, procedure, financial resource and all these things. This one is then student success. They just split it up like that. We do, however, have to respond to anything they find in the year six report. In the year seven report, we only had one category. The the advising manual wasn't updated and they noticed that. And of course, we were in the midst of advising restructuring. This has now been completed, the advising manual, and that will be in the year seven report. So we can show that we acted on that. There's also a mid-cycle report always in the seven years after year three, just to add to the workload here. And what's coming to you for approval, yeah, there's multiple occasions for for that.
Trustee Mabbe.
Thank you. And maybe I wasn't listening closely enough, but what year do you measure, say, academic rigor? And how does E O U measure up compared to other universities? As a layperson, I don't work in higher ed, spent a few other years there myself. But how would a person quantify and qualify that? So when I hear about accreditation, that's what I think, like, how does our faculty and how does our curriculum measure up compared to other, other universities? And that, this looks more like structural and procedural and student engagement, important attributes. But it's that academic piece that I'm not connecting with. So how does that work in this?
So our our university learning outcomes, the four Cs, you know, we have critical thinking, we have civic engagement, we have communication and we have content knowledge. And the content knowledge part of it is assessed by programs, you know, the programs map out their students based on that. And that goes into the annual program review that they are submitting that. The rubrics that Karen has been mentioning and the change there was, these are external rubrics developed by the American Association for Colleges and Universities. The value rubrics, value stands for Valid Assessment of Learning in Undergraduate Education. These are national rubrics, which we are now using to assess the university learning outcomes. So we do get that external benchmarking too as well.
Trustee Gigan.
Thank you. This is just a quick question, yes or no? Is this report followed up with a site visit?
Correct, yeah, that's, and that's sort of a reason for the timeline. They set the the October twenty seventh to twenty ninth, when there will be on campus. There will be many meetings with lots of different groups, faculty and so on, the governance group. Yeah, so we have to submit well before, we have deadlines submitted before, hence the August crunch that we experience. It has to get in by then, yeah.
And that's like, is it happens this fall, this coming fall?
This.
It's a big deal.
Well, it it's a huge deal.
Yeah.
We will prepare for that. The year six report was not followed by a site visit, so they save it for.
For this year seven. Thank you.
I'm gonna say a couple clever things. I think, well, before I do say clever things, trustee, trustee Hoffman has some.
I'm gonna say something stupid, so we'll get this taken care of. I forget. Year eight, do we start all over with year one or is there a year eight?
Gap year.
We start all over in the cycle, yeah.
And they do tend to change the standards. So you 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 don't usually get the same standards like seven years, like like these seven year standards. These are different from the ones that we addressed in twenty eighteen, which is too bad because that could probably reuse some stuff, but.
Of course, they're different. They wouldn't want you to.
Yeah.
See rocks the previous one. Thank you, thank you. I can hardly wait.
All right, team, here's, here's my two clever things. One clever thing, but just for you, Karen. You made me think of something that I was saying today with the presentations at the symposium. I didn't have a lot of time to listen to everybody and the full story. But I wanted to hear as many people as possible, so I just gave them the, pretend I'm a third grader. And I just needed the beginning, middle and and any conclusions and any recommendations that you have. So when you said the, you know, the top three, but there's other ways that I say it, just so you know. And because I wanted to get through as many, but it's really cool, though. I am impressed with what you've done. Another thought I had is when, when we're not standard, we're below standard. And the Northwest Commission of Colleges and Universities acknowledges that. Do they give us an improvement plan or some kind of requirement that says you have three years, five years, a year to improve that?
Yes, yes. Usually what they do is they call it a concern. And they will ask us to write a report showing how, how we've addressed their concern, how we've brought things up, how, you know, how we've, how we've made it better.
And if you don't fix it, they close the program or they close that. What do they do?
Eventually, there are various levels of sanctions, you know, so, but, yeah.
Usually you have to get a lot of concerns, a lot of ongoing concerns before that will rise to the level of that, you know, actually refusing your accreditation.
Okay.
But if there's an absolute measure that's, that's not up to standard, what they perceive as standards, that's why we, there is such emphasis on showing processes of continuous improvement, that we actually take these results and work with them and get better. A lot of emphasis on on the process part. And I believe we, we have done a lot in the past couple of years, you know, to to put these processes in in place. And they also see that they recognize, you know, like we all do, that the environment we work in is constantly changing, student profile is changing, you know. That's why this responsiveness to what we're seeing, you know, under the monitoring seeing is is so critical.
And and one thing that the kind of makes these standards unique is that these, this outfit is accrediting all of the universities and colleges in the Pacific Northwest, well, not all of them, but but most of them. And so they have to make standards that speak to everything from a community college to a bachelor level college, to a research level college or a university and religious colleges, tribal colleges. They can't, they don't have very prescriptive standards in general because they have to make it, they have to make something that everybody can respond to. And so a lot of it is really about how you are doing, vis a vis your own mission. So how are we, how are we fulfilling our own mission? How are we doing, you know, are we still improving compared to ourselves? Do we still have processes that we follow and so on? It's, there's not a lot of, it's, it's difficult to come up, I think, with standards that might apply across the board for such a wide variety of institutions.
Thank you. And one more point of praise. Dr. Geisinger, I was particularly impressed with your knowledge and skills as a provost in this report in particular. Your level of knowledge, your your level of expertise, your level of being able to procedurally communicate exactly what we should do and what we're supposed to do and why we're supposed to do it. It's impressive to me. Okay, and so one last thing for trustee George, I think you were getting at this, I'm not sure. It's not exactly the accreditation report. That'll happen in May. It's the process and methodology for the seven-year evaluation that you're using that will then be submitted later for the accreditation report. But this is, we're focused on the evaluation that you're doing at this time, on the elements that you're supposed to do. Is that correct?
Well, the report is, yeah, the report is in progress. It's almost, I mean, what I'm talking about is kind of highlights, highlights of the report. There's not, there's not huge amounts that's gonna change.
And what I'm getting though is, do I, do we want to approve the process and methodology used for the seven-year comprehensive report that later gets submitted into your accreditation process? Or do you just want us to focus on the process and methodology for the accreditation report?
So in in the end, you you will have to approve, you know, the report before it's submitted to N W C C O, which is well before that site visit. So we need your okay, you know, to the complete report.
Okay.
Right? I'm not sure how how far you willing or can go, comfortable going right now, yeah, given the almost complete state of it. But eventually, that's, we will need that approval from you.
And are we calling it an accreditation report or are we calling it a seven-year comprehensive report? Because it's worded both in both ways sometimes.
That's a good question.
And I just want to, I want to get the motion right to my point.
Let's call it an accreditation report.
I guess, yeah.
Hey, go ahead, Chris.
So we, we've had a fair number of conversations about how to process because of the the difficulty with the timing. Academic Ferris folks were rightly concerned that if they brought the document for final approval at the August report and the board, for whatever reason, wanted to make major changes, there's no time to do it. So I didn't, I think the board understands the gravity of the situation and and wouldn't pull something like that at the last minute. But I think that was still a concern. And yet, May was very early, I mean, as recently as last week, this draft was much less complete than it is today. So our original plan was approve the process so that you're confident in what's being going forward. And they know that you know what's going forward, so there's less risk of a big surprise in in August. However, I'll just say, my goal always in advising people on this sort of thing is to make sure that the board is in the position to do, to exercise its responsibility by its life. Is to make sure that the board is in the position to do, to exercise its responsibility by its lights. Uh, so I'll just say, i- if you're confident enough in the process based on this presentation. And you, and you want to tell them this is good, you're great, we don't need to see you in August, I will have no objection to that. I was just wanting to make sure you were set up to make the best decision you can.
I'd say as, as a, I'll just for me, on the, on the governance side or the, the goal setting side, the accreditation side. Um, we should probably have a, a final recommendation versus a, a seventy-five percent. Uh, or eighty percent or ninety percent. Um, so hopefully we can do it in a succinct manner, but um, I still think that it's best for us to do it in August. We're gonna say something.
Yeah, thank you Chair Mendoza. I guess I. What, what if we did want changes in this? I, I, I don't know what it would be quite frankly, but I, yeah, how does that get changed in that timeframe?
Be very.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the time to do that would be now, to, to say, okay, based on what I'm hearing so far, I don't think it's going the right way.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, uh, the other alternative would be, sorry, the other alternative, uh, it's always out there, uh, is in response to this timing problem. To schedule a special meeting of the board somewhere between May and August, uh, at which some sweet spot might occur. Um, I, so I'm, I'm not recommending that, I just, you know, that's the, that's a third option.
Trustee Huffin.
In the interest of time. I would move that the Board of Trustees approve the process used to create the year seven evaluation. Of institutional effectiveness report and the report as it stands today with the caveat. That the final report be presented back to the board for final approval. At the retreat with the information provided to the board in a time certain prior to the actual meeting, give the, the board an opportunity. To read the report. I don't know whether that makes sense, but.
I, I like that motion. Uh, is anyone second that motion?
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded of approving uh, the accreditation report. At this time, uh, with future updates and a final decision in August. Uh, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright team. We're moving on to shared governance. Thank you for being patient. Um, for those that are here for the shared governance, let me make sure I get the names right. I know we have Kevin Walker, Auburn Isaac and Elena Robison. Uh, the first person that we have up is uh, for Faculty Senate is Kevin Walker. The floor is yours.
Oh, thank you.
You all have to give me money too.
What?
Wait a minute. Pottery sales.
I missed that line.
It's pottery sales.
How much are?
Do you have to request?
How much are you charging?
I had an I A S.
I was, I saw, I saw one right there. Five dollars, ten dollars?
Oh, no, our students are worth way more than that, so, it's student made work, so, um, anyway, thank you Kelly.
Mix it in the cost though.
I just wanted to make sure you all knew what it was for and we're not making deals under the table here.
Uh, I don't, yeah, okay, so let's just get to uh, Kevin Walker, University Council, or Faculty Senate, I'm sorry.
That's University Council.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, um. Since the last time that, that uh, we did a presentation, we've had um, um. We've had uh, Faculty Senate meetings four or five times with one to go here in a couple of weeks. Um, one of the things we've tried to do this year in Faculty Senate is there've been a lot of. Been a lot of policies that have come through and some were fairly significant, some were, in my opinion, kind of benign, but uh, we spent. Frankly, like some even call it an inordinate amount of time, uh, building institutional knowledge, you know, what's the, what's the policy, why do we have it? What's the change, uh, as opposed to, uh, you know, I think you just need to sign off on this. Because, you know, those of us that were. Kind of weirds me out, say that I've been around long enough to see a lot of those, but for the younger faculty. Uh, they need to know kind of how the sausage was made, how we got to where we did, what thought process went into, what concerns were raised and addressed. Uh, so some of our meetings have been uh, quite lengthy, you know, pushing near the um, uh, the five o'clock deadline. When it looked on the agenda like we ought to be done in forty-five minutes to an hour. Uh, so the last, since the last time that I presented to the board. Uh, that's really honestly been the bulk of our, uh, bulk of our meetings, uh, mostly informational. Uh, what are these policies, what changed, uh, why are we changing it? Uh, concerns from various senators that came from uh, maybe an individual college, I don't understand why we're doing something a particular way. Uh, probably the single biggest one was the student grievance policy changes that. Uh, to be honest, I was on grievance committee at one time and when the last time that there was some work done. Uh, but the rearrangement, the reorganization was really concerning to certain senators. Uh, they just, they had a little hard time, you know, it's one of those things if you don't do it all the time. Uh, or even more than once in your academic career, uh, they can be really confusing. And we spent a lot of time going through those, uh, and finally after um, a couple of probably. Ooh, I don't know, probably a two, three, four hour discussion, I think we have everybody in alignment on what's going on, why it's going on. Uh, on our last faculty meeting. Um, our retiring uh, uh, economics faculty, Peter Mailey. Uh, had made note that President Ryan was signing on an amicus brief. Uh, and approached me with the idea that uh, maybe this is something that the Faculty Senate should vote to, to back her. And I thought it was a good idea, we added it to our agenda at the last meeting. And, and had a unanimous vote that, you know, didn't want to leave her hanging that, you know, it's not just her or the faculty, faculty were on board. We're, we're supporting that, uh, and um, it's kind of a, this has been one of the. I don't know, probably more interesting years that, that I've been involved with Faculty Senate. But uh, you know, you have the usual changes in curriculum, uh, nothing earth shaking, just. In most cases, it was kind of routine hump drum, just had to make some updates. But the policy changes this year, that was the big thing and, and spending the time to um, uh. To get everybody to understand what happened and why and to get their say. And we still have one meeting to go, uh, we'll wind up our, our Senate business for the academic year and then we'll vote on the. Uh, new officers for next year. And as you see in the notes that we have, I've rather than give you a long, long document that's kind of awkward. Uh, I've linked both the uh, agenda for each month, uh, the meeting minutes and then the zoom link if you want to actually watch. Some part of, of where these um, uh, discussions went. Uh, Maze was not ready by the time that um, uh, I was done because uh, Michael Sell is the. Covering both the Vice President and what formerly was the Secretary's position, so he's kind of making the agendas and um, uh. Taking the notes and creating these reports, so that'll be ready whenever his schedule frees up to get it done. So, uh, with that said, does anybody have any questions?
I think for me, Kevin, the one thing I would ask is when you um, we have these policy discussions, my, my assumption is either the state says there's new policies to implement. Or you, you indicates that there's policies to implement and then you uh, are questioning and do you get administrative feedback for that?
In some cases, that's correct and President Ryan can, can uh, illuminate some of those, some of those are things that. Uh, say update to the military policy. That's basically driven by the Soldier and Soldiers Act, it's not like we have, you know, we're not gonna do that. It, it's clean, sometimes it's cleaning up language driven by, by the, the federal government or, I don't know, and somebody else maybe in the state government. Sometimes just realigning things just because uh, policies were dated, languages stated, references were, were no longer correct. It kind of depends on what the policy is.
Anyone else? Trustee Valeri.
One comment, thank you, because I started reading through specifically to the Student Grievance Procedure Act and see how much work.
You saw the red line part?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, I see how much work has gone into it in a positive way, a great discussion. Because, you know, highlighting, we just heard about the accreditation, the process that leads to. Uh, that, that, that's pretty cool, so thank you. And also the idea of reviewing or refining the. Statement of freedom of expressions. Uh, I was just talking to Nancy this morning, so I know she started that many years ago. But it's pretty cool to see that that one is also being picked up.
Yeah, as an item of interest, that particular thing kind of got lost. We, we discovered in the fall. That somebody said, well, didn't Nancy write something years ago and then we're looking at the pro- process? It actually had kind of went up the line for approval, but then somewhere, it just fell off the radar. So we didn't have to redo the work, we just had to ask Nancy if she still had a copy of it.
That, that's pretty cool, thank you. Uh, as a reminder, I don't, I would say I know President Ryan did tell me about the amicus brief. I don't know if all the board knows, can you remind us on the topic that you were supporting in the amicus brief?
Yeah, and you may have read in the news about um, uh, students on visas at universities. And the revocation of their statuses in a database and so, um, it, we're not in a suit. This is just evidence of, of harm caused to universities which we provided.
Thank you. I, I might just note that uh. The administration unilaterally changed its course uh, during that litigation and uh, reversed what it had done that uh. The amicus uh, was complaining about.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Walker. Okay, Auburn Isaac from University Council.
Yes, uh, thank you for having me here today. Um, I just wanted to, uh, University Council's been pretty busy with policy. Um, again, it's just, it's, it's fixing um, some things, whether that's um. Uh, through things we need to do legally or just correlating policies that, making sure they're matching our processes. Um, what we're doing and, and um, already and that it's, it's matching that in there. Um, and I appreciate the work. When, when those come through, a lot of work is done to um. Uh, talk with students, um, I make, that's a, that's a big one that, um, I make sure that the, the parties that are involved are. Um, I've had a proper amount of time to discuss the policies and how it affects them and their constituents, so. Um, I appreciate everyone's work on that, that when it comes to University Council, a lot of that is done. Um, and we make sure that it, that it has been done. Um, and so, uh, yeah, so we, a Title IX policy came through, uh, student grievance policy. Um, we did spend a lot of um, time discussing uh, that one, just to make sure that, um, obviously when you're talking about people being upset. Um, we wanna, we wanna make sure we dedicate a good amount of time to, to have great robust uh, discussion, so I appreciate the committee's time on that. Um, and then the military um, and federal agency deployment. And we also had a great discussion around the freedom of expression as well, like Faculty Senate did. Um, uh, the, uh, University Council was really thoughtful in how they worked through that to make sure that, um. You know, we are doing freedom of expression and, and that people, all people are feeling welcome um, to do that, so. Um, again, appreciate the committee's work. Uh, a, a good portion of our time is spent on great colleges to work for. Um, and um, what we have uh, done since I saw you all last is um. Modern Think uh, put together uh, an analysis report on the comment section, um, we did receive that back. Um, I want to say thank you again to President Ryan for um. I'm putting uh, putting that forward for us so that we can get that data. Normally it's a subcommittee. That uh, has spent hours and hours to put together a really long report, which is also great though, because. It, that, all that does is just show that people care and they want, um, like I, I have said from last year being chair. Is that when, when your people are happy, your students feel that and success will come from that. So um, happy employees means happy students, right? So, um, they're willing to go the extra mile, so I. Uh, again, I can't, I can't say enough about how much I have appreciated the work um, that the committee has done and that President Ryan has um, been. Uh, working on that to make sure that we're, we're really digging into those results, because I, I just don't think they have been given um, the time. Uh, in previous um, years, so. Uh, and uh, so my main point from that, great clothes to work for, uh, the Modern Think gave us the report. So we put together a small subcommittee to read through um, the comment section, um, there's three people on that committee. Obviously, um, having um, uh, discretion and those, we don't want those opening comments out. It's, that's not a good practice, but we want to just make sure that the report is um. Is uh, capturing the spirit and the nuances of E O U. Um, and also for me, this is about building trust and it's not just we're having a third party put this together, but. We are having um, people from campus saying, yes, this report was done correct. It does capture the spirit and the nuances of E O U and um, and we can move forward and take that uh, that data as, as accurate. So um, that, that's been a big focus for me is, um, as you'll see from the report, is building back that trust, so that's been. Focus that I wanted to bring um, as chair and appreciate uh, President Ryan's work on that as well, so. Um, that's what, uh, what we've been working on going forward, uh, the next meeting. We'll just be doing onboarding and bringing on committee members. I will say that another part that we'll be focusing on. Um, will be uh, reevaluating the duties as we have lost um, some administrative support. Um, also with uh, technical support when Jeff Carmen left as well. Um, so we need to redistribute that where it's, a lot of it has, has come on to the chair. Um, and uh, we just want to make this, we, we don't want this, uh, i- in my opinion, the chair is not just about doing. The, the work and the technical little things, it's about showing leadership and uh, we need to be focusing on the issues. Um, not just uh, lost in the, the nitty gritty of, did you send that info line out? And so, um, and that's what I, I, I want us to come and, come together and, and work through that, so it's um. Again, it's not just about who can take on the work, but who is the best leader for the position. And so that's another um, aspect that we'll, we'll be talking on, so. Um, I will say that this is probably my last board report. Um, as is uh, Chair for U C is uh, is currently a two-year position and this is the end of my two years, so. Um, I appreciate the board's work and, and listening to me talk the past two years and um, being able to ask the tough questions. Um, and so uh, I'm still on campus, but um, I'll be taking a step back from chair uh, this coming year, so, uh, thank you all.
Well done, Chair Isaac. Is there any questions?
Yeah.
Any questions?
Just seem mad. I would just say thank you and thanks for your service and you're a bright light, so thank you for.
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, E O U is, you know, I, I've told people it's, this is the place I want to be and retire. I love being a student, love being an employee here, um, so I just want to continue that and that's why I'm, I'm passionate about it, so, thank you.
Very nice. Alright. Thank you Chair Isaac. Um, now we're going to hear from the President of the Associated Students of Eastern Oregon University, Elena Robison.
Perfect, thank you guys. Good afternoon, thank you for having me. Um, obviously we're in the spring term, so things are kind of slowing down a little bit, but it doesn't mean that we still don't have things going on. And I really am hoping that we're gonna finish off on a strong note, um, and get some stuff done before the end of the year. Um, a couple of weeks ago, during the first week of May, we had an opportunity to go to Salem and do some lobbying. And we were able to participate actually in two different lobby days, so it was two very long days, but two, I hope, very successful days. Um, we advocated for higher education in general on the first day and then the second day we focused on student basic uh, needs. Which are very important, obviously. Um, also right now, we are on the last stretch of getting our constitution and bylaw changes passed. It is currently being voted on by students, which is really great. Um, just gonna highlight a couple of things real quick about that, um, the two main things that we really tried to focus on is putting things we're already doing and writing. Into our constitution and bylaws and we also reviewed and went through every single job description. And changed things around, updated things, got rid of things that don't um, happen anymore. And that was a really great um, thing to go through and so I'm really hopeful that it passes and ge- gets to students. Um. And then Intern Senate is working really hard. They've already met twice this term and do plan to be meeting again during Week 10. They only have one position empty, which is the Director for Financial Affairs. And we also have that, we reopened that application. So, hopefully, crossing my fingers, we'll be able to get that position filled before the end of the year, which would be really great, because that means they will have a full team, which hasn't happened in the last couple of years, being able to go into the new year with a full team. So, I'm really hoping that happens for them. And then lastly, I want to invite you guys to two events that we have coming up. Actually, tonight at 6:00 PM, we are having a campfire kickback. It's going to be over at the fire pit over by the sand volleyball courts, and we are going to be doing sand volleyball. We're going to have cornhole and other outdoor games, as well as smores and hot dogs. So, come check us out. And then lastly, we have the Fourth Annual Car Smash Event coming up on June 5th, from 10:00 to 2:00. So, if you find yourself in the area with some anger, come take it out on the car. But that is it that I have for you guys. I would love to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Anyone?
I'm just going to volunteer that I did the car smash last year, and that was a great deal of fun.
Hmm.
Did that improve your disposition?
It did then. Do you get, is there a bat? Is there a certain?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. So, we get two hearts donated by B and K Auto, which is really great. And then we have baseball bats. They're already pre-vent from the last three years. But, so they get the job done, and it's super fun. We've done sledgehammers in the past, too. I don't know if we're doing sledgehammers this year.
Obviously, I've done it.
Well, how can you not?
Trusty Stanley, is there anything you want to say?
First off, thanks so much, Elena. This is probably the last time you're meeting with the board, and I believe you're graduating this year, correct? So, congratulations to you. I do have a question for you. I believe back in the fall, we heard from Isaac that there were some challenges in hiring people and getting new voices involved. And so, I'm just curious, what changed for us to be now in a position where ASU is on the cusp of going into the new year with a full team?
Yeah, I don't know entirely what to credit it to. I do believe that we have a lot of new people joining this year, well, next year. And a lot of them are freshmen, which I think is really great. And I also think it might have been a change in our advisors as well. Our current advisors are very involved on campus and have very encouraged students to apply, which I think has been very helpful. And I also just think that we're trying to be a little bit louder as a group, ASU be a little bit more prevalent on campus. And I think that might have been helpful, as well as just students are seeing us more, which means that they want to get involved. But I'm not entirely sure.
If I may, I would say Elena has been an extraordinary leader, who's been really inclusive and welcomed people into space. And I think that that has been really good for filling those positions and getting more involvement.
Thank you.
That's so great to hear. I was going to tell you, Elena, to not forget to credit yourself in the excellent job you've done as a leader.
Thank you.
So, thank you so much.
Elena, we didn't get enough time. Vice Chair Cronin.
Well, Elena, I was going to ask what you're going to do next year, but be, and so, and I'd like to hear that, and then I have a follow-up comment.
Yeah, actually, right now, I don't have a plan. So, if you guys, so I majored in marketing with a minor in communications, so if you know of any jobs, let me know. So, right now, I'm just going to stay on the ground and see what happens next, kind of just go with the flow.
Well, I think, judging from what I hear, I think you're not going to have any trouble finding a place. You're going to be an asset to wherever you go. And as I said, remember, this is, you could put this on your resume. This is a big deal. Not every student takes on this challenge. And I just want to follow up by saying to the three of you sitting here, Kevin, Auburn, and Elena, you, all three of you, again, represent some of the best of EOU. And your dedication, all of you, not just this year, but through your careers, I appreciate very much, and I think that you exemplify the kind of people that we have at EOU who are truly dedicated. And so, I just want to thank all three of you for your service. And you're going to have, as Chair of these committees and of the student body, and just think of all the wonderful time you're going to have on your hands after your, all the extra projects you'll get to do at home. So, I just want to say thank you very much. And it's a shared governance at EOU works, and it's because of people like you. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey. I don't think we could say it any better than what Vice Chair Cronin said. So, thank you for your continual attendance and also for your reports. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move forward with Student Program Highlight, which is the Trap Shooting Club. I don't know if, okay.
So, the screen light comes on.
Okay, thank you for being here. I see Ashley Huff, Ashley Nick McLaughlin, and Savannah Shorts. Yay. Some of you I've seen, and I've gotten to know a little bit over time. I'm going to find my place in here. Student Clubs are an important part of the student experience at Eastern Oregon University. They're a key component of campus vitality. EOU's Trap Shooting Club recently competed at Nationals and earned recognition. I heard you beat Boise State and one other Pac-12 school. I don't remember which one.
All sorts.
Oh, that's great. Well done, very well done. So, you represented EOU very well, and you've earned that recognition. These three members of the club are here to talk about their experience. Thank you so much. It's your show.
My name's Savannah Shorts. I've been at EOU for, this is my fifth year. In June, I'll be graduating with my master's degree in teaching. Last year, I graduated with my bachelor's degree in mathematics. And the entire time I was here, I shot on the trap team. I came to shoot on the team in the first place and had a wonderful time with it the whole time. We even managed to shoot and compete through COVID, which was really nice, because I graduated high school in 2020. So, I came to EOU and the math, all the chaos that was happening, and being able to find a place on the trap team to bond with people and meet people was a huge, huge impact for me staying here and being successful, and being able to shoot through my master's program was absolutely incredible.
Hi, I'm Nick McLaughlin. I'm from Spokane Valley, Washington. And this is my first year here at EOU and first year on the shotgun sport team. I'm studying agricultural entrepreneurship, and I've been shooting competitively for about nine years. So, I knew from a very young age that this is what I wanted to do. So, I was very fortunate to find EOU so close to home, and they had a great program where I was able to compete. And this year, I actually had some luck down at the West Coast Conference. I got first in double skeet, second in American trap, third in American, or doubles trap, and then second overall. And then down at Nationals, I was lucky enough to shoot my first runner straight, and it was in a shootout and got third in the nation.
Wow. No problem. I'd like, I kind of want to watch you now, just see you like. That's impressive.
Hi, my name is Ashley Huff. I'm a freshman at EOU this year. I am studying sociology and anthropology with a focus in social work. I've been shooting since I was in eighth grade, so this is my fifth year. And I feel very fortunate that I have the opportunity to shoot with EOU to continue my shooting career. I was a little nervous in high school that I wasn't going to be able to continue. And the experience of coming to EOU has just been amazing. Down at the West Coast Conference, I think I placed second overall. I placed first, I think, in super sporting and third in skeet, I want to say. Yeah, this is just, it's been super awesome, and I'm very excited to continue over the next few years.
And then, not sitting with us, we have five other team members from this year. One of them is fully online. He lives in Ohio and works at a absolutely ginormous shooting complex. Eli has been an All-American every year that he has shot for EOU. He, two years ago, three years ago, was the National Sporting Plays Champion. So, that was a title that we brought home. And then now, with Nick being third, that's our second national title, national medal that we've gotten, which is absolutely awesome. There are a lot of people there and a lot of very, very good shooters. And then, we range in degrees. I was in math. We have three freshmen on the team this year. I think I'm the only one graduating off the team. So, a lot of them will be coming back, but we range in degrees from psychology to agriculture to computer science. I was in math and then now in teaching. So, we're all over the board in terms of what we're doing in school and how we're doing school. Some of us are hybrid, some of us are online, and some of us are fully in person. And we're all able to practice as a team, for the most part, run events, do fundraising, and then compete as a team when we travel. And it's always, always a lot of fun to get Eli off of that plane and have him join our team and kind of complete everything before we go shoot.
Savannah, real quick, how many total students? I don't know if you just reviewed the whole group, or if it was that you have 10 students or you have 15 students.
So, on our team that travels, we have eight students right now. The largest that that's gotten in the past is 17. And then, partly due to money and partly due to increased practice, and our team was improving. The quality and knowledge of the games that our freshmen had was improving. Some of our upperclassmen were having a hard time keeping up with the freshmen, and they didn't really like it. So, our team kind of dropped off in numbers. We have four awesome freshmen coming in next year that are already signed. All of them are way more experienced at all of the games than I was when I came here to shoot. So, in five years, our program has grown immensely. But on our club side of things, we've had 50 people on campus or come out and shoot with the club.
Yep, now I'm getting, so you got a club and you got a team.
Yep.
I don't want to dominate too much, but just for me to hear one more thing, what is it like? Who, the coaches are Shorts?
Yes.
Okay, so tell us a little bit about coaching, club, coaching, coaching team at some level. What does practice look like?
Yeah.
What's the day-to-day thing look like?
So, competitively compared to other universities and colleges around the nation, we are at a steep disadvantage. We do not have anything but trap in the valley. Our closest sporting plays and skeets practice facilities are a two-hour drive. We can either go to Boise, or we can go to Walla Walla, which is a little less than two hours, but still a travel, which has cost us some recruiting, because they want to shoot skeet, and we don't have skeet. So, team-wise, we practice once a week. And then, club-wise, we shoot a different day a week. And people on the team go out and help coach students on the club. So, our coach is John Shorts. He's been a volunteer the whole time, and he is out there at least three days a week, helping between the college team, the college club, and the high school team. So, he's doing all sorts of stuff. But we have had people move from being on the team to being on the club. We've had people move from shooting on the club to shooting on the team. There is some migration between them.
Trusty Mad.
Yeah, fantastic. I have a personal interest in the trap shooting. It's really fantastic. Think about, in the future, congratulations on graduating, but the freshmen, think about how you might be able to do fundraising and what that match might be. There's a lot of really great federal nonprofit programs for sponsoring, like a facility for sporting play or skeets. And just to take away, I come from the Hermiston area. They've had a pretty big trap shooting team for quite a few years. And I heard from some of those high school students in that region, they really had a great, great experience when they came out here for an event. So, well done. Thank you. Keep it up.
And one of the biggest impacts when it comes to who shoots on the team when they go to college and who doesn't, depends on how much they're doing in high school and what they are practicing. Both Ashley and Nick shot all the events before they got to college, whereas I was a trap shooter. So, I currently am coaching the Echo Trap Team. I live in Hermiston. I teach in Echo. So, I know that one well. And I am pushing, pushing, pushing to get a skeet field put in at the Hermiston Gun Club. But we also take some trips up to Benton City and shoot some sporting plays and stuff like that to try to get people more experience, because at this point, it's becoming harder and harder to shoot on a college team, even as small as EOU, because we are so competitive. And we do go to these events and beat really, really big schools all the time. So, the caliber is really increasing at EOU.
Thank you. I think it's very important that we have this type of diversity in the sports that we're offering. I'm Hunter Ed instructor, been all my life, so I want to go back to the facilities for a second. Powder River Sportsman Club in Baker, we've been trying to buy the piece of land so we can develop a sporting play course. So, I will invite you officially to come and talk to the members of that club, because if they see young people like you, and they can see what kind of impact that could create to a collaboration with the university and providing the space not too far, I'm talking about 40 minutes instead of being two hours away, that could be very interesting, so very important. So, I will follow up, or if you can send me your emails, I will invite you to one of the next meetings there. They need, the members need a little bit of a push, and maybe you guys can provide that push to, you know, and we will find the money. The money can be found. Thank you again.
Trusty Hafbin.
Thanks. Are you allowed to have corporate sponsors? Is that? I mean, from a fundraising, I have a friend who runs Highland Hills Ranch in Gonden, and I'm just thinking, man, that would be perfect if you could, if corporate sponsors are allowed.
I know no rules saying there isn't. I know other teams have them, but I don't know. If anything, in EOU would stop that or not. I wouldn't think there would be, but I don't know for sure.
Tim, Foundation, how does Foundations work for these types of things?
I think they can name. Yeah, it'd certainly be possible to have a sponsor, especially of this type of team. We don't, wouldn't do it for intercollegiate, intercollegiate sports like our football team, but we can't do it for club sports and team sports like the Trap Shooting Club.
We're actually allowed to have sponsors for our football team now at the latest CCC meeting.
Oh, wow. So, we have an update there, too, so we could add it there. And yeah, we can also run those through the Foundation, too, and Foundation can take those resources, and which we've done in the past, actually, with this club, taken resources in from donors and then turned it and given it to the club to use.
Well, maybe we can investigate that further. The other potential fundraising thing that you could do is if one of you would take Vice President Seidel under your wing, he cannot hit the broadside of a barn with a shotgun, unless it's a hen. If it's a hen, then he can shoot it.
I'm waiting for that.
You'd probably pay a lot of money to learn how to do it. But anyway, thanks, thanks. But, and yeah, let's investigate that possibility, because it'd be great to be walking around in a Highland Hills EOU jacket.
If I was in your shoes, I guess to be really clear, set a meeting with Vice President Seidel, see if you can get these connections and see what you can do to move it forward over the next three to four months. Chair, might I say, we're. Yes, trustee Rio.
Uh, and in response to, to Chuck, um, a couple of years ago during the retreat here, we, we did have the opportunity to shoot with the trap club. So we might have to maybe test that this upcoming summer and, and uh, and see if uh trustee Hoffman can back, back the words, but.
Hey. I will, I will point out, yeah. What I did shoot, I did kill.
I, I believe it. I, I lo- I lost to former president in S C O, so I had to, I had to eat, eat some words then, but um. But no, I appreciate you guys coming here and uh sharing about the growth of the program. I, I had the opportunity um as the prior uh Director of Finance to work with the group um, on several different committees where uh, you know, we were allocating funds and uh speaking with both the coaches and and Savannah was there, I think, every meeting um and advocating for the team. So um, you know, Savannah, you've done a wonderful job and I've enjoyed seeing what you guys have done, you know, um, on the sideline. And uh, I appreciate, you know, there's been some really dedicated individuals there, really pushing. So uh, for you, for all the freshmen incoming, um, and for younger members, you know, there's a lot of work that's gone into it. And I, I know that they're only, you know, that's Savannah and, and the rest are only bringing in uh folks that are gonna keep it going. So, you know, there's, there's youths out there that are, you know, twelve, thirteen, fourteen years old that are gonna want this opportunity and keeping these conversations going and keep winning and, and sharing those wins with everyone goes a long way. So appreciate you guys taking the time to come here today and uh really enjoyed hearing everything that's been going on with that program.
And we would absolutely love to host you all at the gun club again. I may or may not be there, cause I'll be graduated, but they'll both be there.
I personally love coaching everybody. It's the kinda second hobby. Like, well, the club that we've been talking about, I've been one off there every weekend, helping them. And we've had a consistent bunch, like ten people come out. And it's been kinda cool to watch them go from like shooting tens out of twenty-five till a couple of weeks ago, I had one of the people shoot twenty-five out of twenty-five. So it's pretty cool to watch that growth and I'll be more than happy to help anybody.
Yeah. I need ten, ten sessions at least. Yeah, you guys, this was impressive. This was good. Uh, Savannah, in particular, your family's done a lot for, for La Grande, for La Grande School District, but also for you and uh, we wouldn't have what we have without your family, so.
And we, we really want it to keep going. It, it is a big, it's a big goal of mine. I'm, I'm working on starting uh an S C T P team for high school, um, for e- uh Eastern Oregon, just in general. So it'd probably range from all the way over in the DOWLS to, to the Grand Ron Valley. Um, to pull kids together and give them a chance to learn the games that these guys came in with knowledge. Um, to get them ready to shoot in college, because we, we do have such a good dominant program here. That we are just, we're competing and winning on a national level. Um, and it's, it's, it's impressive when they go, where's E O U? And they never guess Oregon for that second letter. I don't, nobody knows Oregon's a state, but they'll, they'll guess Oklahoma, Ohio, and then they're like, they're not, there's not another O state. Um, but it is fun saying, no, Eastern Oregon University, we're from La Grande and then we have people win and it's awesome.
Love it. Well done. Thank you. Unless there's anything else. We're good? You guys did a great job. Mrs. Huff, I wish we had more time with you too. I know that you were. Is there anything you wanna share one last time?
I don't believe so. I appreciate you guys allowing us to come and speak about our, our experiences with the program with this time.
You guys are impressive. I'm glad we have you. Well done. Thank you. All right, team. Thank you. We have about, we have about thirty minutes um where we can talk about this before the next scheduled thing at five-ten. We're gonna get to consent agenda topic E and have a discussion around topic E. Um, real quick, um, my recollection around topic E is our meeting minutes and how we record our meeting minutes and potentially how we summarize them. Uh, trustee Hoffman is going to express his concerns or perspectives related to meeting minutes. Um, after sharing his, his thoughts, I'd like Governance Chair Mabbett to explain the perspective of the Governance Committee. And then we'll, we'll ask um Secretary Burford to share any thoughts. And then basically, I'll, I'll wanna hear any other perspectives and and I'll see if there's consensus or not. And uh, we'll, we'll move over, you know, to next steps depending on what I'm hearing. So. Trustee Hoffman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I'll be brief, because this, um, you know, I don't wanna make a, a big deal about it. But what I would like to do is take you all on a journey. It's a journey that you may have gone on. It's a journey that I went on last week. When I was trying to find what happened at the Governance Committee meeting. Um, the, the, the way I started my journey was I went on and found the live stream meeting and found the summary. And the summary's nice, because it tells you where in the live stream meeting you, you can find things. Unfortunately, the, the um, uh, the, the summary didn't identify all, it didn't identify everything that was on the, the agenda. And then I, I saw, you know, as, as you remember, there's the, the um, uh, the, the transcript. Um, so I was faced with uh three choices. Number one, watching, a- and discussion lasted the better part of half an hour that I was trying to find. Um, so I was, I was, uh, my choices were to watch the video and, and listen and watch the entire thing, to not watch the video and, and listen to, the transcript is verbatim and includes all the ums and ahs and ers and, and that sort of. My third choice was to shove bamboo shoots underneath my fingernails, and that's the choice that I took. Um, seriously though, I, I, you know, I said, okay, I gotta go back and remember how we did this. I, my memory was that we came up with this um strategy to help reduce the amount of work staff was putting in, trying to, to um uh, uh, putting all the minutes together. And, and, you know, I, I voted for that. I remain in, in favor of that. But, but what I'm not in favor of is the difficulty and unfriendliness that I personally suffered. And anyone else who, who wants to look into this is gonna suffer as well. And I think there are alternatives these days. For example, if you go to a physician these days, you're gonna find a cell phone on the counter that is tape recording. Well, it's not tape recording, it's recording your entire interview with the physician. Now, the physician can take, i- i- it's called DAX Copilot. Um, it, it's part of their electronic medical record. And the physician can set that software to determine the, the level of specificity that the note will include. I mean, how detailed it is, how detailed it isn't. Um, he or she can set it so that it um will uh put it in outline form. It'll put it in paragraph form. It'll, it'll do all sorts of stuff. And uh, uh, DAX Copilot is just, is one. Uh, another one that I, I'm familiar with in um, in, 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 in meetings, not medicine, is Read I, Read A I. And it's a very simple program. And it just hits, you know, you know, I, I was tell Cedric the other day, we're, we were talking, I was telling him about the old Dragnet show and Sergeant Joe Friday, just the facts, man. And um, so it, it just gives the facts. So I am personally a hundred percent in favor of what the Governance Committee i- i- is recommending, continuing what we're doing for now. It's just that I would also like us to investigate additional alternatives to put uh, this record together. That's, that's, that's more user-friendly. I don't think it's very expensive. We have I T staff that saying, you know, gee, I think computer people kinda, you know, get off on this. So that's all. I, uh, again, I, I'm okay with the, I'm personally okay. And I, I'm personally okay with the, 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 the video being the official record. Don't have a problem. It's just that I think we could improve the, the, the minutes and, and, you know, I, I know there are rules and regulations that we have to, you know, the state says this, the state says that. I, I get that, but maybe we can, rather than just say, okay, this is the way it's gonna be from now on, maybe we can try to improve it. End of speech.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee or, or Governance Chair Mabbett.
Yeah, I know. You know, me, brief, I don't get.
Well, for the sake of time, thank you, Chairman Doza. And I appreciate your conversation, trustee Hoffman. Um, I think almost three years ago, we had a robust discussion before you were even on the board, because it takes staff considerable time to transcribe minutes. I do that in my lineup work and um, it does take a long time. And I know there was a yin and a yang about making it legally accessible and posting it so we comply with Oregon revised statute. So that's why we went to the verbatim. It's not perfect. Um, I personally love reading well-written minutes that are a summary and identify the author and characterization. It's a lot of work to do. So if we had abundant resources, I, I'd favor that. So what I heard you say is you're okay with the Governance Committee concluding that we would keep the status quo, but we would continue to investigate other alternatives. And as the Governance Committee Chair, I would support that. But I also don't wanna impose additional work. It typically falls on Secretary Buford to do that and, and other people who work with him. Um, my concern expressed, if you happen to go back even farther, a couple of years when we had these discussions, was to make sure that the electronic version was not the only version, cause some folks just don't have access to computers. I'm, my eighty-five-year-old dad has never owned one and he's still doing fine. Not that he'd wanna read E O U minutes, but um, there are lots of folks like them. Um, so anyway, um, I, I think we're uh, ready to hear from Chris. So we can continue to look at it and it's not perfect, but it, it meets the letter intent of the law and it's easily accessible.
Oh, sure. Thank you. Um, yeah, um, so we're always interested in doing as good a job as we can. And, um, I'm particularly interested in having our public stuff be publicly accessible, but also maintain the functionality of the Board of Trustees. Uh, the fundamental thing from my perspective is that um for the first eight and a half years that I was taking this job, I had a full-time assistant. And um, even at that, we didn't always satisfy demands for what we were producing. Uh, so it's been a challenge to, I, I, so I, I do have Suzanne as assistant as this assistance, um, nominally twenty percent of her time, but she works about a one and a third F T E. Uh, and I, I'm not gonna get twenty percent of that. But she, there's a lot of demands on her time.
I agree.
Um, so I, uh, I was happy to have the good, um, you know, the perfect not be the enemy of the good. We had something functional. I walked the board through the process of accessing it a couple times. Uh, I think the great advantage of the YouTube-based A I is it is linked to the transcript. So if you could scrim the A, you, the, the A I transcript to find the, you know, you can use the the summary to find your time block. You scan the A I transcript to find the, the speaker you're looking for or the part of the conversation you think you're going. Click there and boom, you're there. Uh, I don't know of another system that we can link to our video that will do that for us. Um, but um, yeah, I, um, so I guess that's what I've got to say. I mean, we have something functioning, always interested in improving, but I can just say that the, the availability of resources to investigate that and implement that is paper-thin.
Let's, let's, uh, any other, any other trustee that has a perspective they'd like to share. Go ahead, Cedric.
Uh, more just a question. I think one thing, and maybe you guys have already considered this. Um, I kinda ran as a test in preparation off this meeting, but um, at least on the premium version, Chat G B T, um, it produced very I felt ninety-nine percent effective minutes off of uh literal transcript. So maybe meeting in the middle of, I already forgot what that program, uh, you guys use in the offices, but uh, the transcripts are just noisy, cause they're verbatim. But if we could have a program, clean it up, you know, that could maybe help bridge some of that gap and it'll learn. I've, I've been using it a lot. It learns as you put things into it. And if you read something you don't like helps doing something, you'll tell it, no, repeat the task, but make this change and maybe it could help bridge that gap a little bit.
Any other perspectives? What I'm, what I'm hearing in, for us kind of on a consensus is, we're good with the video. We're good with the transcript. I feel like there's consensus there. The last part is, do the, does this group want us to explore uh, Read A I? Or do they want us to explore taking the cr- transcript and then putting it into a chat G P T and then allowing it to do a summary? Or is that overkill? I just, I wanna get that. I think we got two down that we're, we're done. The, the last one, I wanna make sure um, I hear from, from everyone.
So ju- just clarification check on what you were trying to find from that. Were you trying to find the change the language for that governance or the, the conversation that was happening around that?
Yes, the conversation.
Okay.
The sort of thing that you'd typically find in, in, in minutes.
Okay, President Ryan.
Yeah, I, I guess I would just share, um, you know, all the meetings that I, like, you know, I'm in like every association. I know you are too, Chuck. Um, it's like, it's a lot of meetings, right? And I will say, like, the, the way that I'm experiencing those meetings in terms of minutes now is the way we're doing it. Does that mean that this has to be the system forever? No, right? Because like new technology is always coming and we're gonna have to explore it. And, you know, with all due respect to Secretary Buford, he's not gonna be the technological mind behind exploring new technology, right? Like, yes, right? So, so, you know, I, I don't think this has to be the end of the conversation. I think we need, I feel like so many of us are in meetings. If there's a better thing, we're gonna learn about it just because of the nature of the work that we do, right? It's gonna emerge. At, at this point, like my favorite minutes right now come from the Frontier Conference that we're in athletics, because it's, it's what we do, which is like you get the timestamp and then the minutes. Um, and it's just kind of what I'm used to now, I, I think, is, is the video recording. And, and I, I don't know if that's better than paper in the long run. I know it's more accurate. Uh, is it, so I, so I would share that. Um, I would, I would say this, let's consider this a work in progress. That seems to me like a good attitude around it. Um, Mauricio, I think you attend a few meetings too, right? Like, I think, I think between all of us, we are in attendance at so many things that it's gonna be pretty clear to us what we're seeing that is like good and new. I think right now we're at probably where A I is. You know, I think we're, we're kinda at where technology is. And I think we'll have to adapt, you know, as, as new tools emerge, which is, I think, your suggestion.
Okay, so here's what I'm at for consensus. What we're gonna do is we're going to make a decision, I, I'm to affirm um the video recordings and to affirm the YouTube uh voice um audio transcript or the voice-written transcript um as presented. And if, um, if there further conversations about new technologies that could potentially summarize, let's bring that to the Governance Committee and let them have a chance to, to spend time with that. So trustee Hoffman, I would say if you wanna have them further press um, potential summary uh summary programs or summaries, technology, that we could discuss it further there.
How about if I, since we have to approve their recommendation, how about if I take a stab at a motion to do that? So I would move that we accept the Governance Committee's recommendation on item E. and that the board remain open to investigating all um future techniques of of recording the record um, as time goes on. And I I'd personally be happy to bring back to the the committee and and show you, you know, we can just do a video, videotape, and I can bring you back um, some AI-generated minutes from, from different things. I mean, it you know, is, as Cedric has pointed out, takes a couple minutes. It's very fair. So I make that motion. Here, second. Yeah, it it, it, it is okay. Um, but that's not my motion to give you any direction. My motion is to approve your recommendation, but also to make it clear in the video minutes or wherever else that this board will continue to investigate additional alternatives to recording the minutes. So I'm not directing the governance committee to do, to do anything.
That okay, Tamara?
Yeah.
I think it's a future.
Okay, thanks. Chair, Chairman Doza.
Yes.
I I just want to, uh, we actually pulled out two items, E and F, and
This is, this is E right now.
Doing E right now. Okay.
I just want a separate bucket.
I'll second the motion then.
It's been moving seconded for us to allow for the video recordings as a standard format with the transcript that's generated um, at going forward with the future um, opportunities to look at technology and for trustee Hoffman to set up meeting times at some point with governance committee to be able to to show those programs. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Okay, the motion passes. Item E is moving forward. Um, now discussion topic F, same process. Um, this is about having the board chair and the president as voting members of committees, uh, only if a quorum is present. Um, trustee Hoffman also wants to share his perspective. Um, from there, if if Aaron Lair is on, if trustee Lair is on, um, I'd like to hear from trustee Lair uh, from academic affairs on her issue and her perspective. Um, from there, I would like to also hear from trustee Mabit on the governance committee, the perspective that governance committee had, and then for us to have a discussion afterwards. So trustee Hoffman, please share perspective on uh, uh, board chair and president as voting members.
Uh, I'm gonna try to be briefer on this one than I was, so hold me to that. Uh, the, the issue with the academic affairs committee was that they had some informational presentations to view. They did not have a quorum and the, the meeting was, was canceled. The suggested um solution to that, our, our current bylaws, if you will, our current board statement says that the president and chair cannot be members of committee. I did not realize that. Uh, it struck me as odd because the president is a mi- member of the finance and administration committee. So that took me by a little bit of surprise. Wha- what even was more surprising to me is a quorum is not necessary to see an informational meeting. A quorum is simply necessary to take action. Frankly, none of our committees take action anyway because all the committee activity is recommended back. But that notwithstanding, um, eh, the
We do take action is gonna be the, we, to recommend to the full boards. And our, actually, our bylaws state that the only thing that uh, a body can do when it doesn't have a quorum is do things to try to get a quorum or to schedule another meeting. That's in our, that's our bylaws.
Well, eh, eh, thanks, Chris. I appreciate that. I looked for that. I couldn't find it. So I would like to know, maybe you can let me know, just let me know where and what board statement was, which obviously can be changed typically. You know, ju- yeah, part of the problem in all of this is, is I am a bit of a parliamentarian. I served five years as Speaker of the House of Delegates of the Oregon Medical Association, fifteen years as Chair of the Oregon Delegation to the American Medical Association. Boy, if you want to know Robert's Rules and Orders, you gotta go to one of those things. So typically in Robert's Rules of Order, um, eh, 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 the, the scheduling the new media, a quorum is necessary only to take action. If we have that, eh, I appreciate that, but that's something that can be changed. But nonetheless, the issue that I have is that the, this, eh, the issue of not allowing the chair and the president to vote on a committee and the, the item changed, not only affects the way it was drafted, not only affects the um academic committee, but it also affects finance and administration. Now, we're very fortunate because we have two members of uh, the academic committee also on finance. Gary and Carrie are on there. What, what is a little bit frustrating to me is that finance never had the opportunity to vet these changes. Um, and and so I take a little umbrage with the changes being suggested for finance and administration without finance and administration having the opportunity to provide any input. So I'm, I'm, again, I'm okay with what governance is saying, but, but I'd appreciate the opportunity for finance and administration to provide some feedback back. That's all.
Thank you for that. Um, just because I saw you, trustee George, is there anything that you wanted to share?
I'm a member of uh, the Finance and Administration and Governance Committee, not it's not the other committee.
Yeah.
ASA.
Thank you.
It's Cedric um, is the other one that's on both.
Cedric, he's a big deal. Good man. Okay, so let's go ahead and um, trustee Lair, why don't you share your perspective from academic student affairs? And and then again, we'll move on to uh, trustee Mabit.
Um, you know, I'm not sure that the academic too much of a wrinkle in here because part of the correction there was to allow something that wasn't previously allowable, which would be to have both you, Chair Mendoza, and Dr. Ryan is kind of a backup space for the event that there's not a quorum, um, which, because you know, we've come to a couple meetings of the ASA and not reached quorum, which I find challenging, um, since people prepped for those meetings, to have a backup plan, um, so that if you or Dr. Ryan's obviously at most of our meetings, all of them, um, can step in to honor the time it took for the staff and community members to present in those meetings. Um, it was a, it was a necessary, and I certainly appreciate as chair having that option um, extended in that space.
Yeah, trustee Mait.
Yeah, um, I, I think um, I, it was a learning lesson for myself, and I think the governance committee landed on the language with um, good legal advice from um, Secretary Buford. It just, as Aaron said, added flexibility um, and clarified the language. So certainly, they're not appointed to be the committee for purposes of defining a quorum, but they both, the president and the chair of the board are voting members. So that's add flexibility. I don't know why that seems complicated.
For me, it's not complicated, it's restrictive.
It's less restrictive than it was.
It's less restrictive than it was, but it's still restrictive. It does not allow them to be members of the committee. And I think there are alternatives and ways to allow them to be members of the committee, which I I, I haven't had an opportunity to poll the finance committee to, to see if that's what we believe. I personally, when I'm both on my committee, um, would they want to be on my committee or not? But you know, that's something for the finance committee to talk about. So so yes, it's less restrictive, but I think oh, my point, Tamara, is that overall, it's more restrictive than it needs to be.
So we're gonna do this. We're gonna, thank you for sharing that. Um, Secretary Buford's gonna share, and then any board member, and we're gonna do our best to uh get through as much as we can by five oh five. There's a, a five-ten, um, I'll just say celebration taking place. And if we don't reach consensus, um, it'll be a, another conversation that I'll ask the governance chair or governance committee to talk about, but um, Chair Buford.
This meeting is adjourned. So uh, if you watch the video of this, this conversation, it was pretty clear what we were doing. Um, Chuck got a little bit of it wrong. Our current um board statement on committees says the chair is not a member of either committee, uh, but can participate in the committee and can vote when a, when there's an absence. Uh, so the first change we talked about was uh, making it so that it would only take effect when it was necessary for a quorum. Uh, so that's the first piece. The second was to talk about the role of the president. And uh, that was a fairly complicated discussion, going into the history of the role the president's played in the past, the statutory rules about the president, um, and their relevance then and now. Um, and what we landed on was uh, we did not have a rule like that for the president. So the president was serving on some committees and not on others. Um, she said she voted sometimes, sometimes didn't. And so what we did was we took the, the committee ended up recommending to the board was to use the same rule for the president as for the chair. So um, the chair and the president would not be a member of committees, but could uh, sir, could serve when necessary for quorum and could vote when in that capacity. So that's the recommendation currently before the committee. It expands the president's role in some ways. So for instance, um, she wasn't, she, she still is a member of finance. She's not a member of academic student affairs, so it would allow her to do that stand-in role with academic student affairs. Uh, she would not be any longer a voting member of the committee. Uh, regarding the value of having the chair or the president be members of the committee, my take on it is that they bring a lot of credit. They attend all these meetings. Uh, and they bring a lot of credibility to discussions based on their roles, the president in particular. Um, I almost think it's some ways, I mean, for the president, can you imagine a situation where the president was the lone nay vote on a motion that the finance committee wanted to do? Now, her, her role, her real importance is in that role, that, that capacity as president. Whether she has a vote or not, I'm not sure really matters, other than for being able to form a quorum. Um, likewise, yeah, and um, the, just to talk a little bit about the statutory background, there, there's a state, there's a state law that says the president is a non-voting ex officio member of the Board of Trustees. As far as the board never, the president never votes in full board meetings. Um, the former president did vote in committee meetings and we thought that was okay because committees only provide advice. They're not the actual board. And at the time, we allowed non-trustees to serve on committees. So if non-trustees were on committees and could vote, which is the- theoretical and never actually happened, um, then why not? Um, but now we actually rule says commit, standing committees are only populated by trustees. So that's not so much a thing.
One, one thing I'd say, I apologize to Chuck, um, in the, in the sense that if we would have communicated a little bit more, or people would have communicated more with finance and administration prior to, to get some feedback or input, that that would have been helpful, or that would have been thoughtful.
Well, I will point out, it was, all this was on the cover sheet, published in advance of the meeting. Uh, and uh, the reason we schedule these meetings in sequence is to allow to the degree they want to, all trustees to attend to all of them. Um, that doesn't totally, but, but, you know.
Okay, let me do this. Um, anybody from finance and administration, any concerns that you have, any thoughts that you have?
Uh, the quick thought that I have on this, um, would just be, I'm sure there was plenty of conversation around it, need to look into it more, but um, I, I just wasn't as certain about the term either or both. I think I would like something to clarify which one will, will take priority in the event that both are present. Our board chair and president, I feel, have a very good relationship, but in the event that they didn't, or that there was some issue there where one might vote one way or another, it could be advantageous for someone trying to push something through to choose one. So I would like to designate that if both are present, that either the chair, probably the chair or the president um, would take that position. I think that'd be important to clarify.
I think the either or both probably came from George Mendoza not being able to attend everything. And so, so the both is, yeah. I think as long as you can understand that, uh, for me, it's, uh, I have a busy life and I can't make every meeting consistently at least. Okay, from, go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm on the finance committee as well. Um, I love Kelly. I think you're the really good thing for EOU, and we're very lucky to have you. Um, and I have no problem with you voting, but it's, we're not talking about you. We're talking about the office of, of president, right? And I think that when we open up that door, um, it shakes the credibility of, of the board. Because they are, you know, we are separate from the president. We shouldn't be so close to the president. We're supposed to be independent, right? So I have some concerns, but not because of the person. I think Kelly is amazing. It's the office. It's the office of the president, you know, having a vote. They had, they should be ex officio. They should be involved, and they're a wealth of knowledge. They should be there, part of the committee to be that wealth of knowledge. But voting, but that's just how I feel.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good thoughts. Anyone else?
Um, just to clarify, appreciate that. Um, um, trustee, go again. Um, and it is explicit that neither of those are members of the governance committee for that separation of power that you're referring to. Um, so the exception was on the other two committees. That was a lesson I learned as well. So I'm there, ready to make a motion.
For quorums.
For quorums, yeah, yeah.
I, I think my sense is uh, that eh, we can make that motion. Go for it.
Um, so I'll make a motion that we present the amendments, um, um, to board statement number three as presented by the governance committee.
Very second.
I'll second that.
My motion was to approve the recommendations made by the governance committee, the amendments to board statement number three.
Motion by trustee Mabit. Second by Vice Chair Cronin. All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, do we need to have a nine, seven to two, or are we, or okay?
Uh, so, yeah. No, I mean, we, we've got the names of the folks who opposed. We know who was in favor, so that's, that's fine for the record.
Okay, nine, nine to, just in case.
Mr. Chairman, I know that we're um, busy and pending a rush, but I do want to make a point. I've been part of this board now for about a year and a half. And the way this was brought up under a consent agenda in the past, you know, we voted on just separate issues and a separate line item, and this was put under a consent agenda. And I'm just kind of wondering, why did we do that? And it created, you know, a lot of the concern. We didn't vote on it as an individual issue. And I'm, I'm pro- probably positive that we're not going to have the budget as a, a consent agenda. We'll probably have it as a separate item. But I'm just wondering why all of a sudden these are all, all consent agenda items. So.
I think that's a, those are great question. Um, I didn't think about that myself in that construct, but uh,
Uh, eh, so, um, when figuring out whether we want to put something on a consent agenda or not, one of the criteria is do we think it's going to be controversial? Do we think it's going to generate very much interest or debate? Uh, and we make a good guess about, we make a guess about that. We know that our rules allow for taking things off the consent agenda as we did this time. So maybe the guess was wrong, but the system worked. Um, uh, but there, there are quite a few things that, I mean, uh, we had approval of uh, curricular changes, uh, new programs that was on the consent agenda, and those have been on consent agenda before. They they may not be again. We're having some conversation about the appropriateness of that. Um, uh, oh, but yeah.
Ultimately, um, trustee George, one of the things that I know I, I shared with with Chris, when this, when this came up for me was uh, you know, it's, it's okay that we have discussions sometimes or robust discussions. Um, I don't know why the rationale was for, for choosing what we chose. Um, but I did think, like, for us, this is good stuff where we don't always Um, but I did think like for us, this is good stuff where we don't always have to agree. We can have good discussions. Um, and we can move forward the work uh one way or the other and that, that probably makes us better and better, you know, better thinkers or better boardsmen. Uh, more boardswomen.
I will say that, that I let the chair of governance and the chair and Chris and Kelly all know. Well, if I gave them a heads up that, that I had concerns about this. So I, I, I think. The, the, the lesson for me is, you know, if you want something extracted from the consent agenda, don't wait until the meeting, let people know that you have concerns. So. So just a thought.
Yeah, I mean, the board can deal with the agenda at its meeting. They can remove any item, whether it's consent or any other issue. So. The idea that is, you know, is consent to just, you know, we can, we make the agenda or approve the agenda and so forth. So. Just kind of.
Yeah. Good thoughts, no matter what. Um, and if we do have topics, I think just like uh trustee Hoffman, I also want to. Um, Chuck, I thought you, what you've done to bring these things up. I, I applaud. So I, I know it's. Uh, well, I know it's, I know it's a little bumpy, but it's, it's okay. So good job. All right, team. Okay, I guess we need to get to uh the grand staircase uh. For faculty appreciation, grand staircase, meeting curtain.